convene recess or realign the regular session or call it executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. I'm calling this session Bastrop City Council to order. We're very pleased this evening to have two outstanding members of our outstanding Bastrop High School girls, Soccertine Riley Romney and Lindsay McFarlane, to lead us in our pledges of allegiance. Ladies, if you will step up, and everybody please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
After the Texas. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Give these young ladies a round of applause. If you'll stand, wait, wait, they gotta take pictures of you. I warn ya. Thank you very much. We will now have Reverend Kietrich Steger, one of our police chaplains, to lead us in prayer.
Good evening. God bless you guys. Well, Father, once again, we come honoring you, honor those around us. Lord, you ask us not to lean to our own understanding, Lord, but in all of our ways to acknowledge you. And, Lord, we say this evening, the city of Bastrop, we are acknowledging you as Lord. And, Lord, you tell us to love you with all of our heart, mind, and soul, and may we do that, Lord, in our decisions, may we do that, Lord, in our integrity, may we do that, Lord, in our wisdom and intellect, that we recognize, Lord, without you, Lord, our actions will fall to the ground. So, we thank you today for your peace, your grace, your mercy, and your love, that it covers this city, Lord, like a blanket covers a child in need. We thank you and we bless you in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. God bless you guys.
Thank you, sir. God bless you. Y'all may be seated. We'll move on to item number four, executive session. We have four, five items on executive session. City councils shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate a request from the Valverde Development to appeal the impact fee and fee structure as adopted by the Impact Fee Ordinance 2022-18. 4B, the city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate matters related to development fees associated with the transfer of the certificate of convenience and necessities for the Valverde Development. Item 4C, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding proposed development agreement and utility agreement with WB Bastrop Land LLC for the Ironwood Development Project. Item 4D, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the appointment of an interim city attorney. And item 4E, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate regarding a request from PRC 01 Bastrop LLC Cinderell Development to enter into an agreement regarding the development process outlined in the 380 agreement executed on June 11th of 2024. It is 5:04, councils in executive session. It is 6:40, council is back into open session. We'll take up item 4A. I will read it again. City councils shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate regarding a request from the Valverde Development to appeal the impact fee and fee structure as adopted by the Impact Fee Ordinance 2022-18. We have two people scheduled to speak on this item. Brian Grace, if you will approach the podium, give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Brian Grace. I'm BGE. We're a civil engineering firm. I'm at 1701 Directors Boulevard in Austin, Texas, here on behalf of our client DHI communities and to speak about the appeal of the Impact Fee Ordinance and specifically the assessed impact fees for this project. So, my understanding, and after review of the ordinance and discussions with staff, is that the impact fees for developments in the city of Bastrop are based on the size of the water meter associated with the project specifically for the domestic water service. The city of Bastrop does not have a specified way of calculating the water meter size. And so, what we are proposing and what we are asserting should be done here is that we need to be utilizing a generally accepted means or methods of sizing the water meter. As we have shown in the previously submitted documents, we utilize standards provided by the American Waterworks Association, as a specifically centered M22, and other items within the International Plumbing Code to compute the peak flow rates that get used to actually size the water meter. What's been provided to us from city staff, in my opinion, has not necessarily, or at least the information given to me to date, I have not seen have followed those methods. We believe that the meter size and turn the service units associated with that meter size is the correct service unit total and is what should be utilized for the basis of impact fees for the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person who has requested to speak is Mitch Haas. He has registered support of this item. Council, based upon our discussion in executive session, we're not prepared to take action on this item. We are providing instruction to city staff to go out and negotiate a process where we can resolve this issue. Madam City Manager, do you need any additional instruction other than what we were discussing? I thank you so much. We will not be taking up item 4B, 4C, or 4D. We will take up item 4E. City councils shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code. Councilmember Fosser, you have your...
Oh.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. City councils shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate regarding a request from PRC 01 Bastrop LLC Cinderell Development to enter into an agreement regarding the development process as outlined in the 380 agreement executed on June 11th of 2024. I believe we have a motion.
Yes, I move to approve a memorandum of understanding with PRC 01 Bastrop LLC regarding the Cinderell Development.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fosser.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to presentations. First one is a mayor's report. We have a very long agenda, but there's a couple of things that I need to mention. On Tuesday, the 3rd, I was pleased to conduct a question and answer session on city government with some outstanding students at the Colorado River Collegiate Academy circa. It was a great group of kids, and I thanked them for that invitation. I want to commend the staff board and sponsors of the Family Crisis Centers Gala that was held this past Saturday. It was an outstanding event for an outstanding organization. I think most of council attended. I want to remind everyone that our Lost Pines Christmas Parade will be winding its way through downtown this Saturday. Lineup and registration will begin at 4 o'clock for parade participants. Parade watchers will need to get their desired spots quickly in order to see the parade, which will begin at 6:00. Let's all plan on being safe and have some fun. And the last thing is, this upcoming Monday, we'll have boards and commission training right here at City Hall for our, for all of our boards and commission members. That being said, that's all...
Mayor, just one moment, so that we don't panic to our boards and commissions, that training will be recorded and available for 30 days for those folks who aren't able to make it on Monday. We've already gotten word, a lot of people are traveling for the holidays, so.
Outstanding. We'll move on to council members' report. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, do you have anything to add?
I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I hope everyone's looking forward to the festivities that Bastrop has scheduled throughout the month of December. I was out of town, so I wasn't able to attend a whole bunch of stuff in the last three weeks or so, but I did want to point out the library open house is coming up as part of the festivities. That'll be Saturday, December the 14th, from 10:00 to 4:00. The Graham Cracker House decorating is from 10:00 to 3:00, and there'll be performances beginning at 10:00 a.m. Our very own Terry Moore will be starting the performances at 10:00, and then every hour there'll be a different performer, Matt Butler, Ben Zuniga, the Honor Choir, and Mary Smith, a very talented accordionist. So, and then a final reminder, the library will be closed on the 24th and the 25th, reopening on the 26th at noon. I had the honor of attending the 59th Annual Dewitty Overton Banquet. That is a banquet hosted by the NAACP. I was honored to be in attendance, but I also received an award for outstanding achievement. This year's, their theme was diversity, equity, and equal protection of the law. The event was emceed by Jennifer Sanders. You may have seen her on KXAN News, and there was a beautiful performance by the Houston Tollis and Choir with a keynote speaker, the Honorable Texas House Representative Ron Reynolds. I want to thank Nelson Linder, the Chair of the NAACP, and the Vice Chair Monica Woods for choosing me to be nominated and receive that prestigious award along with 10 other well-deserving candidates across central Texas. Thank you.
Councilmember Fosser?
Hi there. I just want to tell a big, a big thank you to Colin, and Rick, and Victoria. If you haven't noticed, if you haven't gone to the submit your comments online lately in the past two weeks, it's been totally revamped, and I think Viviana worked on it as well. It's been totally revamped. It's very easy to use. You can use it for all the boards and commissions as well as city council meetings. You can sign up to speak online two hours before the meeting or submit your written comments online, and it's really, really easy to use, and I'm so grateful to y'all for revamping that and appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer?
Thanks. I just want to say thank you so much to Kathy Danielson and her staff for the amazing Farm Street Opry last week that they put on. Also, the Opera House performers were there for the Rockin Holiday Christmas. So, if you haven't seen the show, please get tickets to see it. It's going on through the 22nd. And quickly, also just to remind everyone, we have so much going on this coming weekend, so go to Downtown Bastrop on Facebook page. That's always updated. They do a great job. Instead of me listing everything for you, it's so much easier, and I'm gonna spare you some time, just go on the Facebook page Downtown Bastrop, check it all out, and go to all the events. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Plunkett?
I think y'all covered it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to staff and board reports, or city manager's report. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank everybody who came out for the November 21st meeting. The outpouring of support has been... Owen and I continue to get stops, so I appreciate that. I am still trying to coordinate a date with the council on Agnes Street ribbon cutting. You guys are like herding cats, so please, 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 get with Victoria. We need to schedule that pretty quickly. I'm gonna skip to the next image. This is an image that we have at the old Iron Bridge. Many of you have seen the lights. All of the lights don't work, and it says, "Please excuse my tired appearance and the lights that don't quite work all the way as I'm gearing up for a transformation. The dedicated city council and city engineering team are hard at work to help me look and feel my best for the people of Bastrop, and exciting improvements are on the way." So, we will have a ribbon cutting also. We have 100% plans. We have bid documents, et cetera, et cetera, so that will be in the early part of January. Reminding you that we have a December 17th meeting. That is to have a presentation on the wastewater treatment plant proposal that will be coming your way, and then we've got some cleanup items here, and I also anticipate having the VISI-Bastrop contract also. I meet with Mike tomorrow. I think we're there, and so we will bring that as well as their proposed performance metrics to the council. And then, as a reminder, 2/22, we have a community cleanup. We gave it a really snazzy name. I don't think anybody, we were so excited about the name. Does anybody remember what we named it? What did we name it? It was such a snazzy name. Anyway, it is, I used to have a program called Neighborhood Initiative Program, and it was nip it in the bud, and it was essentially all city resources in a particular neighborhood. Fire was painting hydrogen curbs, street was filling potholes, parks was doing cleanup, everybody, all hands on deck within a specific neighborhood. Nip doesn't have a great connotation, so we came up with a much snazzier name, and it was at the request of Councilmember Fosser, who said, "How do we dive deep into neighborhoods?" Well, this is how you do it. You show in force, everybody. And so, we're also including the downtown and encouraging the business to come out and also do their cleanup. So, it should be a citywide. We used to be called Corpus Christi Sparkling City by the Sea, and so that was, you know, sort of the pun on words. Trust me, the staff came up with a really snazzy name. It escapes me at this moment, so it's, we were just calling it a community cleanup. If you recall, in our trash contract, we negotiated some extra roll-offs, and those extra roll-offs, that's exactly what this will be used for. So, we will have sort of a place probably here at the farmer's market away from the normal farmer's market traffic, where folks will be able to come and get rid of their extra stuff as part of the community cleanup. So, I'm excited that we begin to clear our ditches and culverts and begin to see some clean post-Christmas stuff taken down, and that's what I have.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that. Any questions for our city manager? Seeing none indicated, we'll move on to citizen comments. Madam City Secretary, do we have any citizens signed up to speak?
No, sir, we do not.
We will move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody here at the dais want to remove any item off of the consent agenda? Councilmember Fosser?
9A2, please.
So, 9A?
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience wish to remove an item off the consent agenda? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will read the consent agenda exclusive of 9A.
Yes, sir. Consider an act to approve the following Bastrop City Council meeting minutes, Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, regular meeting.
Can I interrupt you? We just pulled 9A off.
The whole thing? I thought she just wanted to pull nine...
Just go ahead and pull the entire off.
Okay, I apologize.
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry. My apologies too. Sorry. We did on 9G. I'd like to pull 9G because we received two additional donations today.
Okay, I'll rewind there.
Sorry.
Exclusive, exclusive of 9A and 9G, please.
Okay. Consider an act on resolution number R 2024-168, accepting a donation from D.R. Horton in the amount of $5,000 for the upcoming Bastrop Mardi Gras event being held in downtown Bastrop on Saturday, February 1, 2025. Consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-36, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2024 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repeating all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, and establishing an effective date. Consider an act on resolution number R 2024-166, approving an interlocal agreement between Bastrop County and the city of Bastrop with Cloud Gavel for electronic warrants, cloud-based services, Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repeating clause, and establishing an effective date. 9E, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-42, approving the council, the covered applications and prohibited technology policy as required by Senate Bill 1893. 9F, consider an act on the request to refund a replat application fee in the amount of $1,986.29, and to refund the board commission appeal application fee in the amount of $3,681 for the property located at 112 Post Oak Rim, Bastrop, Texas, within the city limits of Bastrop. 9H, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number 2024-43, amending fiscal year '25 operating budget to fund the replacement of the Bob Bryant Park playscape, shade structure cloth, new playground surfacing, and swings feature in the amount of $100,000 from the general fund operating fund balance.
That is it, Mayor?
Council, City Secretary has laid out consent agenda. I have a, I have a motion from Councilmember Lee and a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We will move to 9A, consider an act to approve the following Bastrop City Council meeting minutes, Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, regular meeting; Thursday, November 21st, 2024, special meeting; and Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, Joint City Council and Bastrop Economic Development Corporation Board Meeting. Councilmember Fosser, I believe you had questions or comments?
Yes. For the November 21st meeting, in the part 4A, as it reads right now, the motion is Councilmember Meyer moved to allow the city manager to present a response to item 4A. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland seconded the motion. Motion carried three to two with Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Fosser voting against. I just wanted to add, since there's an editor's note above it, I wanted to add a little context because the minutes are for, for the people to understand what happened at a meeting without having to watch the video, and if you were to watch the video, if you were there, you would, you would have heard that our conversation was about the format of the presentation and not whether or not there would be a presentation. Like, we were all there for the presentation. That was a given. And the actual motion conversation was about the format, if we were gonna do like point, counterpoint, or an uninterrupted presentation. So, that's what the motion was about. I don't know if we can add another editor's note in there, but if someone were to read the minutes, it looks like I've voted against, so we are giving a presentation, and I would have never done that. It was just the format. Would you all be agreeable to adding an editor's note in there about, perhaps, Councilmember Meyer moved to allow the city manager to present a response to item 4A without point, counterpoint? Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland seconded the motion, and then the rest of it?
To me, I think the question would need to be, what, what did Councilmember Meyer actually say when she made the motion? Because we wouldn't be able to...
Sure.
...say anything that she didn't actually say.
Yes. And maybe this would be a better editor's note, since there are editor's notes on this already. She said, "Can we, can we move just, can we move just to have our present right now?" That's what it was.
So, we can just put Power Point?
Yeah. So, I guess I'm looking for an editor's note would be the right thing.
We can insert presentation and make note that it was a presentation. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. I'm good with the rest of the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, council, this item has been laid out. Councilmember Fosser has asked for an editor's note, which the city secretary has said is she's able to do. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve 9A.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fosser.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We'll move on to item 9G. Consider an act on resolution number R-2024-180, accepting donation to the city of Bastrop for the Texas Municipal League's TML Region 10 Holiday Quarterly Meeting hosted by the city of Bastrop from various companies and individuals in a total amount of $2,040.00 attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repeating clause and establishing effective date. Madam City Manager, do we have something to add to this prior to this?
We do. The total amount is $2,340, as we have received a commitment from International Consulting Engineers, Inc., who will be attending with two people for a $300 door prize.
With the, with the amended list of donations, I will...
I'm sorry, what was the revised amount?
$2,340.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer, a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further, Councilmember Fosser?
Just impressive list. Thank you, everyone who's on it. Appreciate it.
TML is supposed to be a fun time for all of our members.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. No further discussion. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 10A, or items for individual consideration under 10. 10A, conduct a public hearing, consider an act on the first reading ordinance number 2024-4 for the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the zoning change for 10.56 plus or minus acres out of Nancy Blakey Survey Abstract 98 located west of FM 969 within the city of Bastrop from P2 rural to P5 core, as shown in Attachment 2, providing for findings of fact, providing for repeater, providing for severability, providing for enforcement, providing for proper notice and meeting, and establishing an effective date, move to include on the January 14th, 2024 consent agenda for a second reading. Ms. Higgins?
Good evening, mayor and council. So, the item we have first for you tonight is a rezone for the FM 969 Retail Center. You can see the location west of 969, adjacent to the Valverde subdivision. When land is first annexed, it comes in automatically at P2, and the regular process is they come back for a rezone after annexation in order to zone it appropriately for their proposed use. So, this land is currently zoned P2, and they are requesting P5 core. It is adjacent to the colony as well as the new Valverde, and so there's going to be some much-needed commercial relief in that area. Notification was sent out to the 24 surrounding property owners within 300 feet of the lot. We have not received any opposition or any support either. We have not received anything back as far as the notifications go. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Higgins?
Is there a zoning concept scheme or anything like that?
Yes, it was not included. I'm so sorry. Essentially, they're wanting to do a gas station and a retail center. I also have the applicant here if you have specific questions on what they're proposing.
Sure, yeah. And then, other questions will be in the area of impervious cover requirements, given that we're considering changes to that. Should we change that as well? Do we have any concerns with traffic or roadway type things? It's a very busy road. Yeah, just, is there anything in those spaces that we need to discuss or consider?
That'll be a question for Ms. Sylvia, and as far as impervious cover, they're not requesting any variances as for what is currently existing.
Understood.
Changes haven't been made yet, and so that's kind of a gray area. They're not really able to do much on until the changes actually come.
Yeah, they would be vested under the existing rules of the higher impervious cover, and...
But we could change that today, right?
Impervious cover is not on the docket today. That still has to go through P and Z. At P and Z, only...
No, sorry. I completely agree with where you're going with it. I'm saying that, though, that this is a zoning change today, right? And then, this zoning change, I'm suggesting that we could set the impervious cover for this P5 property today, for this property.
I'm going to punt it to Alan, but if the developer is agreeable right now, you're not, you're not working on any type of development agreement or amendment. It's a straight zoning, Alan.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim, council, technically, the zoning of any kind is a legislative act where final discretion rests with the city council. So, there's what's requested by the developer, and there's what's decided by the city council. So, you have the ability to set a different impervious cover letter... a different impervious cover letter if you wish to do so.
I just want to talk about it, just in case.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So were we, is this a situation where we needed to notify residents within that 200-feet area?
Yes.
And did we get any yes or nays?
No, we notified the 24 surrounding property owners, and we have not received response from anybody.
And so, to be fair, the properties within 300 feet are owned by corporations.
It's mostly Valverde and the Colony.
Is that it, ma'am?
So Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland, is your suggestion that the impervious cover-
My suggestion is that we just talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have, if there's no other questions for Ms. Higgins, we have a public hearing that we need to conduct. It is, I'm opening this public hearing on this item. Madam City Secretary, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this item?
No, sir, we do not.
We will close the public hearing, and we will move toward a motion.
So I did want to hear from the developer on the, what they were planning to build there.
Outstanding. Can we have the developer come forward, please?
Hello, my name is Pam Gamache, and I'm with PSCE in Austin. And I'm representing our client proposing to develop two, of two retail buildings with an included gas station on 10.3 acres of land at the corner of FM 969 and Street A in the city of Bastrop. Building 1 will be a 7,400-square-foot general retail center with a sales center with multiple tenants. Building 2 will be a 6,000-square-foot general retail convenience store, and the gas station canopy will have 12 fueling pumps. These will be built in two phases. The first phase will be the gas station in building 2, which is a convenience store. The second phase will be building 1, which is the general retail sales center, and we will be following city standards and are not requesting any variances. Thank you.
So Sylvia, on the, you know, I kind of think of some of the things that we've built near Riverside Grove. There's a gym there, for instance, and so you go and you add retail buildings of about this size. You fill the land with parking and a building, and then you put a foot of water in someone's yard that already lives there. Now, maybe there's not houses directly around this today, but there will be. And I just, you know, how do we prevent that happening? And, you know, I mentioned the impervious cover, but not specifically that we should change that, but rather, you know, how do we keep from flooding the neighbors is really the underlying question.
So, right now in the development sequence, it is almost a first-come, a first-served. So we try to look at drainage from an area perspective. This, the drainage rules require that this development not release any more than it was releasing at the rate of pre-development. Pre- and post-development must equal. That being said, that doesn't mean more water won't shed. It just means the rates of that water shedding must equal. The developments next door have to take that into account. But yes, we do have a multiplier effect that happens, which is why the proposal to reduce impervious cover to 65% is what has been at Planning Commission. We just ran out of time this last meeting, and we will hear it at the December meeting. But it's a reduction of impervious cover pretty much across the board.
Is it from 90 to 65?
It's 80. Right now, it's P5 is an 80%, and the proposal in front of Planning Commission is a 65%.
And on this piece of property that we see up here, where are the lot boundaries for the 10 acres?
It, I mean, if I can see right here.
Basically the screen, right?
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Oh, okay, got it.
So I think we're-
I was super focused on, you know-
Yeah, I think we're well under-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I think this is just their phase one. Correct. Yeah. So this is just phase one. There will be a secondary building added, but this is phase one. And then this is the detention pond over here.
And the current detention pond is going to be based on 80%, because those are the rules in place today.
Yeah.
Would, if, wait, I'm sorry. Councilmember Meyer, you had your light on?
Yes, so my question, actually, well, two. One to city manager. So the P and Z is going to take this up at their next meeting on the impervious coverage, and then it'll have to come back to us. So what are we anticipating on the timeline where we could change the impervious coverage? Another-
January?
Okay. So what, tabling this until that is done, anticipating that will happen? Would you recommend doing that?
So I'm going to punt to Alan again, but I believe you're going, we're going to run into vesting, and you're going to have to do it up here.
Okay.
Anyway.
Yeah, I agree with our city manager's recitation of the process going forward.
And my second question is to Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland. So is your suggestion then, up here, doing exactly that?
You know, it's not so much that I'm specifically suggesting it. I didn't come into this discussion with that sort of thought through already. It was just, you know, I'm thinking through the gym there in Hunter's Crossing, and having spoken to the homeowner that lives the closest to that, and every time I speak to him, he has politely forgotten that he's spoken to me previously. And we go into his backyard, and I get to see, you know, the evidence of the foot of water that shows up when it rains. And so I'm just, you know, aware of that and thinking, well, goodness, this is about the same size as that gym building is, and, you know, are we going to create that kind of a situation for someone? And that's what I'm doing. I'm asking that question just to see if maybe there's something that we, you know, should do about it. In this case, there are no other properties around it. If we'll have engineered detention for the 80% coverage, I mean, it might be okay. I just, I just wanted to have this conversation.
Yeah, and I totally appreciate that, because I agree.
Yeah.
Because not just this, but there are other issues, you know, all over the city, where, that's why we're trying to amend these codes. So, big point is, we need to get these codes amended ASAP to not create more problems. So thank you for your input.
So the other, the other point that, you know, with the applicant's approval, I don't know what your phase two and phase three is. Can you enlighten me again on what phase two and phase three are going to be? Are they commercial and retail? What are, I mean, what are they?
Okay, so the first phase will be the gas station, which will have 12 fueling pumps.
Can you come a little bit closer to the mic, please, Sylvia?
Oh, I'm sorry. So I'm Pam Gamache with PSCE, and we're going to be having two phases. So the first phase will be the gas station in building 2, which is the convenience store. And the gas station will have 12 fueling pumps. The second phase will be building 1, which is the general retail and sales center.
So there is an opportunity to mitigate for impervious cover with not over-parking the site. And that's what we consistently run into with older-style zoning codes. So if we could, and again, I don't know if you have compatibility uses. The discussion could be that we allow a shared parking ratio so that you have more open space and less cement, less concrete. That increases the runoff.
Oh, I see, with the detention pond, okay. So you said it might be another meeting in regards to this?
So, yes, planning and zoning picks it up. Cue the date.
I think it's next Thursday.
Next Thursday. Whatever day Thursday is. The 19th, the 19th, December 19th is when planning and zoning picks it up, and I anticipate then the council will hear it in January. But the proposal is to reduce impervious cover numbers. And it's not necessarily not making the site developable. It is essentially not over-parking the site. That's a win for you. It's a win for us. It's a win for the environment. The, because I don't know specifically who you have license with, sometimes that gets difficult. Like, if it's a Toyota dealership or a Ford dealership, they obviously have Cs and Cs of concrete. That doesn't sound like it's going to be your comment, but, you know, the feeling of the council and of the board really is, we do need to reduce those impervious cover numbers.
Okay. So, and so P and Z meeting next Thursday, and what time will that be?
I'm looking at the board chair and the board, I, six.
Okay, in the same building?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We'll be here.
So are you amenable to them tabling it, or are you agreeable to a reduction of 65% as-is?
I'm not able to speak to that. Are you saying we can speak to that? Yeah, I merged it, who was our engineering project, who's not here tonight, but I will ask.
So you're okay to table it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so it's from simple cap now, but you're wanting to do 80%.
80% is what is today at the P5 commercial, and the proposal in front of P and Z is a reduction to 65%. And that could be met through a variety of-
Councilmember Plunkett had a comment or question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, because of the, if you say the detention pond had to be built to accommodate 80%,
You did the math, yeah.
All right, so if they go to 65, does that reduce the size of the detention pond and cost and all that?
Yep.
So that might actually, yeah, I'm looking for win-wins.
Yep, no, absolutely. And the win-win could be a reduction of the detention. It could be a shared parking scenario. It could be a combination of those two things where they still have equal developable area, but just the runoff is significantly decreased.
Sounds good. Councilmember Fosler?
There's also the cost of redraw with changes and re-engineer, just also.
I will say, if it is tabled tonight, I do request that it is tabled to date certain so that we don't have to re-notify and repost in the paper. Yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yeah, how does that, how does that, do you have to re-notify for January 10th, for instance?
If we don't table to date certain, we just table it in general, we have to re-notify everything, including the property posting, the newspaper-
But if we did January 10th, you don't have to do that.
Correct, that is correct.
The correct wording would be postpone to a specific date. That would be the motion, and you would give the date.
And that date?
January 14th.
Okay, if there's no further comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So motion to table until January 14th?
Second.
I have a motion-
Excuse me, it's postpone until the certain date. It's a postpone, it's not a table. Yes.
I believe it's still tabling this item until a specific-
Well, she's wanting to tape, to postpone to a specific date. That was the request that she made. And so, the correct wording would be postpone to a specific date, which she gave, not a table. A table is done when you, at a specific meeting, and you table it right now, and you're going to discuss it later during the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, motion to postpone till January 14th.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland, a second by Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 9B. Conduct a public hearing. Consider and act on the first reading ordinance number 2024-46 of the city of Bastrop, Texas, admitting the code of ordinance related to chapter 14, the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Article 6.3, General Lot Standards, Section 6.3.005, alleys and driveway locations A, B, and C, as attached in exhibit A, and providing for findings of fact, repeater, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and move to include on the January 14, 2025 consent agenda for the second reading. Ms. Higgins?
Mayor, before you, can, because the 10A through 10E are all related, can I ask that you read those public hearing notices all together so that we can give you a comprehensive overview of what that change entails?
And conduct a public hearing for all of them?
10A through 10E, I'm sorry. They're all related. We have three codebooks we're working through.
Okay, I can certainly read them. 10C, conduct a public hearing. Consider and act on the first reading of ordinance number 2024-47 of the city of Bastrop, Texas, admitting the code of ordinances related to chapter 14, Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Article 6.3, General Lot Standards, Section 6.3.006, parking B457, and subsection 9, as attached in exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, repeater, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting to include on the January 14, 2025 consent agenda for a second reading. Moving on to item 10D, conduct a public hearing. Consider and act on the first reading ordinance number 2024-48 of the city of Bastrop, Texas, admitting the code of ordinances related to chapter 14, Bastrop Building Block B3 Technical Manual, Article 2.1, General Standards and Requirements, Section 2.1.006. Parking areas, subsection A, subsection 1, as attached in exhibit A, and providing for findings of fact, repeater, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting, and move to include on the January 14 consent agenda for its second reading. Conduct a, 10E, conduct a public hearing. Consider and act on the first reading ordinance number 2024-49 of the city of Bastrop, Texas, admitting the code of ordinances related to chapter 14, Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Article 6.3, General Lot Standards, Section 6.3.003. Building placement, subsection A3A, as attached in exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, repeater, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting, and move to include on January 14, 2025 consent agenda for the second reading. 10F, conduct a public hearing-
Not 10F, sorry. Sorry to interrupt you. 10F is separate. They are all related to parking, but 10B through E are related to parking in the same way.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I am good. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. So like Ms. Sylvia had said, the next four items we have are all related in one way, in the fact that they all are in relation to allowing parking in the first layer. There are multiple different codebooks and a lot of different code sections that mention parking in the first layer, and so we did them individually in order to make sure to capture them correctly. There are two items that have something in addition to parking in the first layer, and so I'll go through those separately, but I'll go through parking in the first layer as a whole in, at first, which is exactly what this says. So essentially, the background on this is the B3 Code currently does not allow parking in the first layer. It is expressly stated that it is not allowed. And what that does is it creates a situation where you're not required to have any onsite parking at all. You can have completely on-street parking for your entire development, which leads to congested streets, because we do have more narrow streets. So this is the lot layer diagram in the B3 Code. The first layer is from your frontage to the front of your house. That's the first layer. The second layer is 20 feet deep, and it's on the side of the house. The third layer is from the end of the second layer to the rear line. Currently in the B3 Code, you are required to either park on the side or on the rear. Parking is not allowed in the first layer. So these are some examples of some streets in town and some houses in town that would no longer be allowed based on the current B3 Code, because there is parking in the first layer. There's parking in front of the house, as you can see on both of these lots. And this is Riverside Grove. Again, parking in the first layer, parking in front of the garage, parking in front of the house. This today, unless there's certain exceptions, is not allowed in the B3 Code. Just more examples of that. And so a lot of arguments that we hear to argue away from parking in the, or requiring on-street parking and parking in the first layer is that cars are going away, asphalt creates heat zones, streets are expensive to maintain. There's a lot of arguments for and against. And so, some of the options are to amend the code to allow parking in the first layer by right, even if a structure is affected more than 50% due to damage. That is a current exception. If it's less than 50%, they are allowed to build what was previously there because they are grandfathered. Another option is to amend the code to give the homeowners the option to park in any layer of the lot, or to leave the code as-is. And so, on 10B specifically, this is one that has a little bit more than just allowing parking in the first layer. This is also in relation to alley locations. Currently, alleys are the preferred means of access, means of entry, and it requires parking in the second layer, which is the side of the house. The proposal for 10A is to allow parking in front of the house. So this is how the code currently reads. You can see what is struck, what is struck through is what we are proposing to remove from the code. A, which clarifying the intent, and the rest of it is just removing the requirement of alleys and giving the developer the flexibility to, if they want to put an alley, they can, but it's not, it would no longer be a requirement.
Can I ask a quick question? Because 10A was actually not, so you're starting with 10B?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Because that was-
10A was the rezone.
That was for FM 969, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
So you're actually on the first one for alleys and driveways?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, 10B specifically was parking in the first layer and alleys. It's just 10B through, I think, E are all related to parking in the first layer, so kind of getting that away in the, out in the first. And would you like me to go through C through D? And would you like me to go through C through D, or would you like to take action at each of them?
Read them all, should go ahead and go through them.
All right. And so, ten B, let me get it. Sorry, ten C. This one, sorry, to remove parking maximums from P five core and allow parking in the first layer. Currently, the code specifies that P five shall establish parking maximums based on market demands. When we don't have a table, we don't have a chart, we have nothing to regulate what the parking maximum should be, or minimums as well, and so just removing a parking maximum and allowing the developer to not overpark the lot, it's, it's, it's just working through that process. And the secondary with this item was to allow residential garage facades to begin in the second layer. There had been some discussion about exempting Old Town from this, not allowing residential garages to begin in the second layer, second layer of Old Town District, that is a character district. It kind of goes along the lines of the Iredelle District that was suspended in March of twenty-three because it was deemed that we are not allowed to regulate it that way. The city of Bastrop is not a certified local government, they had, the previous staff had begun that process, but kind of never finalized it, never finished it out, and so the Iredelle District was created without a certified local government, and so we weren't allowed to do that. The only way that we would be able to regulate something specifically in Old Town would be to create a special district, and to create a special district, we need to be a certified local government. So currently, we, we, there, there's not an option to just exempt a character district from these requirements. Ten D.
Wait, let's, let's go back, so we cannot create an exception to the Old Town character district?
Not based on the Old Town character district, it would have to be like a zoning exception, like, except in P one, P two, or P three.
So Mayor, just for clarity, so the state legislator removed the ability of cities to regulate aesthetics. And in that, there is a lot of aesthetics driven in the Iredelle District, so that was temporarily suspended. The references in the code, though, still relate to parking in that first layer and alley entrances is the means of parking. I know there is a move afoot to not allow this in old, what is known as Old Town, but I encourage you to drive through Old Town, and I know that people feel the intent was not to prohibit parking in that first layer because the garages are offset and people will park in the back. People are still parking in that first layer, and there's really no way to enforce that. I think the issue becomes, and it has become one of aesthetics, and if you go back and, and view the planning commission meeting, you know, folks will say, well, the houses in Riverside Grove are those, and snout houses are ugly. I, we don't get to regulate aesthetics. What we can regulate are setbacks, we can regulate open space requirements, we can regulate those kinds of things. The code is very, very, very difficult to navigate. And what Kennedy's referring to is, in order for us to create an Iredelle District that quote-unquote "looks and feels like authentic Bastrop," the only way to do that is to become a certified local government, and then we can move on through that, and/or create a district that fifty-one percent of the property owners in there agree to be guided by principles such as a pattern book, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It, it's a much difficult process than just, I'm going to create a district that now we're going to regulate aesthetics in.
So there's no legal mechanism for us to accept a parking facade or a garage facade in the second layer?
We will regulate it via setbacks, which in, in our case are defined as layers.
Okay. All right, you've answered that question, carry on.
Awesome. That moves us to ten D. This is an item that is just about allowing parking in the first layer, this is for the B three technical manual. Currently, it specifies that parking is required in the second or third layer, and this amendment is just to include the first layer, so first, second, and third layer, parking is allowed. The last one, ten E, it's another amendment that is to allow parking in the first layer. And so, the proposal is to strike through on A, with the exception of parking. How it reads today is, all structures and encroachments customarily allowed on the lot are permitted in the first layer with the exception of parking. So this inherently disallows parking in the first layer, and so this proposal is to strike through that to allow parking in the first layer. And that is B through E.
Council, Ms. Higgins has laid this out.
So Mayor, I just, I wanted to address, because I saw the email from Mr. Sherner related to not allowing this in Old Town, so to speak. And I, I want to draw your attention to the pictures that he sent, and really what we're talking about are setbacks. The setbacks in Old Town are greater, they absolutely are, because the lots are bigger. The B three code moves the buildings closer to the front of the lots. If you go and you drive down Blakie and you see the apartments, you can see how close they're articulated to the street. With building setbacks shrink, shrunk, and density numbers increased, that is inherently creating this issue of parking and congestion. If we really want to look at the Iredelle District and we really want to make substantive changes, then we need to really look at lot size minimums and we really need to look at greater setbacks. If you go back to that Riverside Grove picture, that, while people may not agree on the snout houses, which is what they're called, the reality of it is, those, go back one for, one further?
Nope.
Too fast, further? So, you can see the trees are in the private realm, they're not in the public realm, they're not pushed forward, the setbacks on that street are about twenty feet, cause you can see the cars are not coming over. So I don't necessarily believe it's an issue of buildings and things in the first layer, I believe it's an issue of setback. And so we have to go back to normal nomenclature, setbacks versus first layer, to really understand what we're dealing with. There's a fear that those garages in the first layer, we don't want any more snout houses. Alan, please, tell them we don't have a way to regulate aesthetics. What you consider ugly, somebody else might consider beautiful. So, you can go back to the other slide.
I do have a technical question on that image. For one of those.
Go back.
Oh. There's a lag, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. So for, for this home that's in the foreground, where you see the garage and the two cars, how many parking spaces do they have currently? Does the garage count as parking spaces?
Yes.
So then, would you argue there's four parking spaces? Okay, got it, thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor, that's, that's actually one of the points that I have been struggling with, because, can you go back maybe one?
To which one? The one right before?
This one, right here, thank you. So, the whole talk about the first layer, every house in Bastrop has parking in the first layer. So, I was really like, I won't say confused, but I had a lot of questions about why we keep arguing about the first layer and the second layer, because most houses all have a driveway that extends to the street, which is for parking in the first layer. So is it just a matter of, when they wrote the B three codes, they just kind of left out the first layer in the discussion and the language, and we're fixing that now, right?
Sort of.
Because it seems like in previous conversations, you're saying parking, and I'm like, well, the driveway is parking. So you're saying parking in the first layer, but we already have parking in the first layer, so.
You ended up with a lot of grandfathered stuff, you ended up with a lot of non-conforming stuff, and so, some folks argue, the code doesn't say that, we didn't intend it to say that. Well, I'm going to show you where the code absolutely says that.
I was actually going to ask you to show me that.
Yeah, it's, it's in, okay, somebody needs to stop advancing for me.
No, you see, no, these are the issues I was having, I wasn't crazy.
I want to say.
Lord, where'd it go? Lord. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Are you trying to get to that code sheet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, so. So, first of all, the initial code, so, when I talk to folks who were in the development of the code, they're like, we never meant that to happen. Well, true, but that's not what we wrote, we wrote, design parking spaces and drive aisle locations shall be placed specifically in the second or third layer. And she showed you where the second layer is. So, we're grandfathered now, if your house is like that, you're, you're grandfathered. We dealt with the grandfather, remember?
But if something happens to your house, you are not.
But a year ago, we dealt with the non-conforming and said, if we drop a pin in everything around you, two hundred feet looks like you, you're okay to rebuild what's there. So then, here, here's specifically where it says, all structures and encroachments customary allowed in the lot are permitted in the first layer with the exception of parking. And so, I, you know, I, I hear you, because I continue to get that argument, and I'm like, I'm gonna point it out, black and white, I'm just trying to clean up the code, we didn't mean to prevent, I know y'all didn't mean to prevent people from parking on the drive aisle. I know y'all didn't mean that, because where else would you park?
Yeah, I, I think, I think the thought was garages, and that's why it needs to be made clear, a garage is a structure which is separate from the actual driveway where you can park. And I think that's where the, some people are like, parking is parking, my driveway is parking, and I think back then, the garage was the concept of why the language was written the way that it was written.
Exactly, and so, all we're trying to do is clarify it, because I don't have the code enforcement mechanism to go after everybody who's parking and where everybody thinks they should park, which is on their parcel. Now, we do have to deal with the structure, because if you say, okay, structures can start at the first layer, that means right at the edge of the street, that means right behind the sidewalk. And so, we have to go back to the normal language of a setback. And there's other references in the code of setback, which is, you know, typically twenty feet, depending on where you are, twenty or twenty-five feet, depending on where you are.
Yeah, but twenty feet is the house that you showed us in Riverside, right? So what's the standard for a setback? Because that, we're saying that the way that it is now is too close to the street, right? So what is the standard setback?
That's going to depend on, if you're in an HOA, if you're in like an Adelton, for example, where they did alley entrances, the setback is ten feet or so, ten to fifteen feet. And so I think that's some of the fear that people will see in Old Town, that you'll see a carport or you'll see a garage pop up within the first ten or fifteen feet. And the reality of it is, if you really drive around Bastrop and you go down Jefferson Street, and you go down Fayette, and you go some, into some of the older neighborhoods, you're going to see those carports in that first layer anyway. You're going to see that, and so when people tell me, well, we took a DNA of Bastrop, hmm, you took the desirable DNA, you really didn't go throughout every single neighborhood because we have a hodgepodge, but that's what makes Bastrop authentic, is that I can have a nineteen, you know, seventy structure, and a fifty structure, and a thirty structure, and then a beautiful historic home, so. And then the, here is, is where I struggle, for example, P three is our residential, it says will be market-driven. Well, what does that mean? I don't know what that means.
Wait, I, I thought that said P five, because I read that.
There's both.
But I, okay.
There's a reference to P five.
Cause I had a question about that.
Yeah, and it says, P three shall not be the driver of site pla, I mean, parking shall not be the driver of site planning. Well, so, when we go through the development process, it's a reverse engineer, I mean, because I don't have a minimum lot size, I start with lot coverage. It's a math problem that we're trying to solve exponentially, and so if a developer comes and says, I want fifteen parking spaces, but I'm only going to build a two hundred and fifty square foot home, I mean, it meets the codes, it, it, you know, it's not beautiful, but we, we've just got to get back to some normalization of what.
So, let's, let's talk about page, I don't know how your presentation goes with the packet, but there's, on page seven, which is one oh six in the code, so you showed, you gave us a screenshot of the code, and the code says page one oh six on it. It starts, uh, but it's on page one oh six of the packet. It's in regards to cross-access connections, that, that page. That's not what my question is, but that's a reference for you to find that slide.
So one oh seven is ten D.
Okay.
It is ten C.
Oh, sorry, you said page one oh seven of the packet. Okay, that is ten D.
It's on, it's number, it's on page one oh six of the packet, but it's item number seven is what I'm, the question that I asked. So that item says residential, what you want to change it to is residential garage facades may begin in the second layer. I kind of have a problem with the "may," because that's what you just stated. By, to me, this statement says my, my residential garage facades may begin in the second layer and onsite parking is allowed in the first. "May" to me means, I could put it in the second layer or I could put it in the first.
Correct.
So, we don't want someone's garage being on the street, we just, you just mentioned that, and others mentioned it in the meeting on the twenty-first, so shouldn't that say "shall"? The garage shall begin in the second layer? To prevent someone building a garage in the first layer?
No, I mean, we really need to do away with the word "layer" and go back to the word "setback." We should have a minimum setback of, you know, twenty feet. But, let me, let me back up a point for the folks at home. So the B three code is written in a way that vehicles are going to go away, and we're going to go through, it's, it's in the preamble.
I know.
And that vehicles are going to go away, and we need multimodal transportation. And multimodal is defined as hike, bike, walk, et cetera, other modes of transportation, golf carts, et cetera. And so, the thought process is, you extend the sidewalks and you make the houses closer to the sidewalk to encourage neighborhood engagement. That's all great, except we're lacking some of the necessary infrastructure to make that happen. And so cars, in Bastrop, and we're in a semi-rural area still, are not going to go away, and then the lack of mass transit ability, they're not going to go away, so we still have to account for the cars. When we say first layer, it absolutely does mean a very closer portion of the street. To resolve this, we should say, first layer is defined as a minimum of a twenty-foot setback. Period.
Not, not even further?
No, twenty foot is.
Twenty foot is the car length, right?
Yeah, but your, your building facade should start at twenty feet, which is the Riverside Grove picture that you saw. That is offensive to some people who don't want snout houses.
But I don't hear you saying it's offensive, what I've heard you say is, just you talked about the length of the driveway and the closeness of the street. So, so is twenty feet enough of a setback?
Twenty feet is enough of a setback, yes, to the first front facade of any structure, yes, absolutely. If a developer wants to do less, we have the ability of a planned development district. If a developer wants to do more, there's nothing in the code that prevents you from doing more. Nothing, absolutely nothing.
And the edge of that twenty foot begins where? At the street or at the sidewalk?
At your right-of-way.
At the house.
Yeah, at your property line.
At the property.
So what, so I go back to then the "may," why, why are you saying "may" and not "shall"?
Well, because "may" gives flexibility, but "may" is also mixed in with that first layer. I'm happy to go to a "shall," and, and, but you'll caveat that with, the first layer shall begin at twenty feet. And you've covered it.
I would actually rather do that, just to make, make people twist the meanings and say, well, it says I may start it, but I could put it in the first layer, you understand what I'm saying?
So, yeah, I'm happy if you say the first layer shall begin at twenty feet.
I, I think that that would be good, and then.
And then you've mitigated the fear of people building right up to, even though the intent of the code is to build closer to the sidewalk.
Right. And then I think my last question, is in regards to that, five, parking maximums, but for P five. So if I, I remember the, it says P five, it's crossed out, you're proposing we cross it out, it says, P five shall establish parking maximums based on the market demands per use. I, I remember that actually being the subject of creating the maximums, because, to avoid the open parking lot that we have.
To avoid the super, to avoid the super parking lots.
So why, why are you saying we should take that out?
Because in other, in other sections, it says shall be market-driven, and.
Okay.
A maximum is different than a minimum, we want parking maximums, because I want to encourage compatible uses where people are sharing their parking lot, like, you know, this gas station. The gas station, if she has a restaurant that's open later than the gas station, there's no reason why they can't share parking space, there's no reason to build additional parking space. The heat and the water that those things create is not a good thing. Parking minimums, you know, that's, that's a whole different conversation, because some retailers say, I must have a minimum of four parking spaces per two hundred feet.
So that's the market-driven? Okay, so, and that's still in there, okay, that was the other thing I wanted to be sure of. Okay, I think that, that's not my question.
So, the, the solution is, the first layer shall begin at twenty feet? Is that the?
That's pretty much the consensus.
No, because Councilmember Fosler. No, because Councilmember Fosser understands that the B3 is written so that you're super close to your, you're super close to your front.
That was the request. Councilmember Meyer.
Thanks. Yes, so I do agree on the 20 feet, absolutely. But also, um, on the, the point that parking shall not, not be driven, uh, site development shall not be the driver of site, that's about one of the stupidest things I've ever heard because it encourages street parking.
Well, so, in the, um, in the vein of that, when you read that sentence in its entirety, it means, you know, a Walmart shouldn't come to us and say, "I'm building an 80,000-square-foot facility and I need, you know, four parking spaces per 100 feet and therefore, I need to reverse my engineering into whatever."
Right, right.
That's kind of what it's saying.
Right, and I get that, totally. I'm just saying, like, on a development, but to, even, I mean, I get developers wanna make a lot of money so they can get a lot of houses on a small space and high density and all that, but having parking on the street or no parking requirements or not in the first layer, you are infringing on your neighbors down the road. Just because you have the right and you wanna make a lot of money on your lot that you're gonna put a high-density development on, that doesn't give you the right to impose on your neighbors' rent. So I totally, I agree with everything and even on the 50%, uh, I think, Kennedy, did you say 50% or more has to get approval, like an improvement if you're in a, uh, one that's non-conforming?
If you, if your structure is damaged by 50% or more, you lose your grandfather status.
So I don't even agree on that. I, I, I don't, I don't even know why we have that. I just don't think that's fair. You know what I mean?
So we've mitigated that to some extent by giving another clause in the non-conforming status. And so, for the House in Riverside Grove that you've seen me do the example, had we dropped a pin on that site and said, "What does everybody within 200 feet look like?"
Yeah.
Uh, and everybody has a garage in the front and they are able to have a garage in the front.
Right. I get, I get it. It's just, we've got a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of stuff in these B3 codes.
There's a lot of nuances.
And it's like, boy, we took all the, the common sense and, and logic and, and the phrasing and everything and put it about as confusing as you get for the people. So, I'm, I really appreciate it of us starting the process and thank you Planning and Zoning for starting the process and cleaning this stuff up, but we gotta get this done ASAP because this is a mess. So, thank you.
Councilmember Fosser.
I have two questions, please. For that same one, 10, can we go back to 10C, please?
I'm sorry, we tried to organize the slides, so it-
No, you did great, you did great.
So it kind of looked like-
And then go to the strike-throughs where we're changing the parking minimums. Is that the one? So, on the two par- Oh, I don't see it on there, but it's in our packet where it says, um, parking requirements and shall require two parking spaces per primary residential dwelling and one-
That's on the next item, that's 10F. We haven't gotten to 10F yet.
Oh, it's, gotcha, okay, gotcha.
It, it might've been on the same page because it's, it's on the same page, but it's a different section. It was relating to a different topic, so we separated them out.
I'll address that one then. So this one, for the setbacks, for changing language from layers to setbacks, I would so prefer that to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission and go through their public hearing process. Their last few, their workshop and their last public hearing was awesome. They did really a great job of hashing through all the things. And that's a pretty significant change to all of a sudden do a 20, 20-foot setback to bring that language back and it hasn't even gone through the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would just, I would just hope that a big change like that could go through the process and have a little more weigh-in and be workshopped before we pass it on the dais because like, that's, that's brand-new debuting like right this minute.
No, ma'am.
The 20-foot setback?
Well, 20-foot, yes, but the discussion about, what is the first layer? What is the setback?
Oh, for sure, yeah, yeah.
That's been a topic of confusion for-
And I, I understand that "shall" language because I remember, because I was at the workshop where it came from. It's like, instead of requiring it to be in the third and they thought, "Okay, we'll ease up on that and say it could be in the second." So that's where the origination of it came from. But I get it, without that context and just the loose "shall," you can interpret it all kinds of ways. I wonder if we could tighten up that language, like "shall begin in second, third, or alley"? Like, there's, that was the origination of that language.
So, the second layer puts us back to where we are today. And if you go back to the diagram, um, if you go back to her diagram of where setbacks are.
I think gorgeous.
Is that it?
One more.
Okay, so if you go back to, parking shall be required in the second layer, then, um, for those houses that look like Riverside Grove or Hunters Crossing or any of the other things that have de, have been deemed undesirable, this is the facade of the garage and the house would be setback further and/or the house and the garage equal, like the houses here, where the garage and the house equal.
The "shall" was referring to the setback. She says she would revise it so that the setback shall be 20 feet, but the parking is allowed in the first layer. That's what you said, right?
And so, is, so let me understand you correctly. So, Councilmember Fosser, you're saying, "I don't have any issue with the structure and the parking starting at the second layer, the structure for the parking."
Correct. Isn't that what P&Z landed on?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board with that.
And, but parking is allowed in the first layer?
Parking cars.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Parking cars is allowed in the first layer.
Isn't that exactly what P&Z landed on?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
And so, the, um, the concern is that the, the setbacks within the new B3 code are sometimes 10 feet off of that. And so, you would end up with a parking structure 10 feet off of the property line. And so, the email said, "We're going to clutter the Iredelle District because things, you shouldn't start things right there at that second layer."
Okay, so what does it do to smaller lot sizes? Like, if you 20 feet back and then the impervious, you just build at the back of your lot?
Yeah, it's, it, yeah. And, and the lots, is not having a lot size minimum is also what is clustering this whole thing because when you do have, let's say, a 40-by-40 lot that you're going to build a tiny home on, um, that setback is going to be a significant deterrent to doing that.
Okay, so as it stands now, we're passing or agreeing with what P&Z said and then adding the additional?
That is Councilmember Lee's recommendation.
For discussing.
The, the solution for you, though, is not an "end-all, be-all, I-can't-do-it." The solution for those smaller lots and those smaller lot developments like North End Prairie is to come through a PDD process that gives you relief through the standard codes. And what I believe is, from the email that I, I gathered, the, the fear is that we're going to lose the character of Old Town if we allow this to happen.
Yeah, I agree. I would, I mean, that's why I wish, I just can't wait for the comprehensive plan update because I think that conversation will-
The comprehensive plan has nothing to do with this code. The comprehensive plan is a 50,000-foot layer that talks about densities and it talks about requirements. It has nothing, absolutely nothing.
Not code, but how we maybe wanna use different parts of town. I think it would talk about that.
Um, sure, but it's also going to be informed by drainage and transportation plans. And so, to believe that the comprehensive plan will drive something like an Iredelle District, um, that may not be the thing. What, what is driving another Iredelle District and another certified local government conversation is the Historic Landmark Commission really wants to create an Iredelle District and they wanna go through the certified local government process.
And that process started already, right? Didn't they?
That, they did vote, yes.
Yeah.
And, um, my, my concern is, I don't disagree with any of that, but I had several people at Planning Commission say, "Property rights, property rights, property rights." And an Iredelle District does just the opposite. It puts significant rules on what a property owner can do on their property.
Sure.
And so, where is-
But if they're agreeable in a certain place, then that might be the way to go for that place, yeah.
Sure, absolutely. And, and so, that's the process. If 51% of the people within that district agree, then, you know, go for it. What I found in the historical is staff started down that process and we got to about a 49% maximum of property owners who said they agreed. And then, we couldn't get past that hurdle and so, we went this other route. And this other route is, would've been okay 10 years ago when we didn't have legislative barriers, but it's, it wasn't okay now. And so, when I got with the city attorney, it didn't meet legal muster because we didn't go through the appropriate checkboxes. So, I am really stuck and staff is really stuck on the desire to regulate aesthetics for authentic Bashrop and the code as it was written that tries to regulate aesthetics, but my inability, according to the legislature, to do that. All we're trying to do today is do some cleanup. If there is a tiny lot subdivision that wants to come through, you can certainly find relief through the planned development district process.
Okay, so are there any other unintended consequences of the 20-foot, I mean, the second layer versus the 20-foot? Like, how great could that differential be? Like, s-
Tell me again, how great could that differential be?
Like, for a smaller lot, second layer could be as far back as eight, 12 feet or something? I'm trying to figure out how like-
Depends on where that goes.
If we don't choose that language, like 20 feet, if we have the, 20 feet is the new minimum and if we don't have that language, like, how much, how much feet are we actually talking about?
That is negotiable within a planned development district. So, I, I'll take North End Prairie. It would come through as a planned development district and that is sort of a condo regime, if I recall correctly. And so, that is all negotiated within the boundary of that. There are some hoops to jump through, of course, especially as you talk about parking and the off-site improvements that would be required for it, but you could still get through the process, through the planned development process.
I'm just talking about like regular, smaller lots, like, there's, there's several smaller lots around town. Like, does this do anything weird to them that we're not thinking about?
Give me an example of a smaller lot.
Um, there's a few, what, yours?
16 Hill Street.
So-
Yeah.
So that's actually a really big one.
Yeah.
But the house is like 10 feet off the street.
There's one on Wilson-
But it's 10 feet off the street because there was right-of-way taken. The house originally platted was not 10 feet off the street.
There's one on Wilson that's really small, just north of the tracks, it's a tiny lot. Anyway, I'm fine with it. I just feel like it's a change that P&Z hasn't vetted and that's always my, that's always my preference is for P&Z to vet like pretty big changes and go through that process, but I'll defer.
Mr. Chair, would you-
He just walked, just stepped out.
He's over here.
He was like, "I don't want any part of this."
I know.
Um, the, really, truly, the intent of this is to clean up some, I believe, unintended consequences. And then, two, there is relief in other areas of the code for those, um, small lots. I introduced a relief that if there's something within 10%, i.e., impervious cover or parking numbers or something like that, it could be an administrative approval that staff does and it doesn't take the resident through, you know, the 15 wheels of development.
Okay, and this is coming back anyway at our next meeting.
For second reading, yes.
For second reading, I mean, it says consent agenda, but people could speak on it.
Yes.
So there would be at least a, a moment where people could speak.
Absolutely.
And we could have a week to think about if it's, okay. Okay, I'm good.
Um, and we have not posted the Planning Commission agenda just yet. If you want Planning Commission to take up the definition of first layer, happy to do that. Right now, Councilmember Lee has, um, offered and Alan's got his light on.
Councilmember Lee.
No, it's Alan.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor Council, I just wanted to clarify something so you have context going into this conversation in the future. What the legislature did in Chapter 3000 of the Government Code is preempt cities from picking building materials, construction methodologies, or aesthetic methods of construction. I know what building materials means. So, at one point, some cities would dictate, "All single-family residences must be 75% masonry, brick, stone." Well, the lobbyists against masonry won that argument and now, we can't tell them what product to build a house or a building out of if it is listed in one of the international building codes. If the method of construction is listed in the international building codes, we can't adopt a local code that is more stringent than that. What is an aesthetic method of construction? I have no idea and nobody else does either. That has not been defined in any statute, administrative rule, or court case. So I think it's possible to dictate certain archi, art, well, architect methods like Gothic versus Santa Fe or something like that. But to dictate the, the building methods and materials, the only way we can do that now under the current law is if we have an approved historic area under the program that the state has blessed, which is what staff was describing. And that's a process the city started years ago but never actually completed. So, whether a garage goes toward the street or in the back of the house, you still have the ability to do that. I agree that, that beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but we can have a consensus on ugly if that's what you want to do. But when it comes to building methods, building materials, we've been preempted. That's the limit of our preemption on that one.
I.e. the pattern book that was part of the Iredelle District.
The pattern book that was, was commissioned and done by an architect and city planners got very, very specific, not just on building materials, but architectural styles. And while we can still argue whether you can do architectural styles, the rest of it's clearly preempted under this relatively new law. Does that help?
Uh, which is-
Three nods, I'll say yes.
Uh, translation, if you guys want to say, "The front of the building starts at 20 feet," you guys can say, "The front of the building starts at 20 feet." You can't say, "Snout houses are ugly and those can't be built ever, forever."
And we don't know what the legislature's gonna wrought this upcoming session either. Councilmember Lee.
So, let's, can we go back to parking on the street? That would be the Riverside Grove one. So, I don't know where you found this beautiful picture, but I drive through Riverside Grove and there's four cars in the driveway and all, the whole street's lined up. So, and this is 20 feet back, yeah? So, I-
This is 10.
I guess the 20 feet back to me really is not that much of a deal because it's 20 feet back now and you still have cars lined down the street. How do we fix that problem? That's a widening of the street.
Exactly.
Yes. And so, where are we in?
It's coming to you.
Okay.
That's coming to you. Remember we talked about, you were in fire trucks?
So our future developments, we're gonna look at, not so, well, we're gonna look at it all, right? But we're gonna make sure that the streets aren't as small, causing this traffic cluster that we find in all of our neighborhoods.
Which really is, um, when you saw the arguments about, you know, the pro multimodal folks, and I won't, I won't say pro multimodal folks because I want to be able to walk. I wanna be able to travel, um, in other methods by car when it's close by. But, uh, the argument is, "Well, wider city streets are more expensive for cities and therefore, cities should go to narrower streets because if you have a narrower street and there's cars parked on either side, it's a natural reduction of speed for cars traveling through that street." Not been my experience, but regardless of that, I'm still looking that the first responders can get there and can get there quickly. Um, and a narrower street makes it really hard for a car to get out of the way when the first responder is coming, especially on a street that is, um, two-way. So, the street widths, those are coming.
That's coming. And to the email, in reference to the email, um, and his, well, it's, he wrote a citizen's comment, so I'm actually looking at the citizen's comments too. So, if I'm reading his citizen's comments correctly, he, he wants the second layer garage constructed in the second layer, but the Old Town District, what's, I don't know where that name started coming from, but we started calling it the Old Town District, but I call it Bashrop proper. The Bashrop proper area, he's saying to put it in the third layer. If I'm reading this correctly, he says, "In all districts, onsite parking is allowed in the first layer. The Old Town character district is where all the historical homes and original block structures exist. Many of the older homes place the carriage houses in the rear of the property." I, I wish he was here to explain if that's what he's suggesting because that's the way because that's the way that I'm reading it, is that the, in the Old Town District, he wants the prop, the parking in the rear of the property.
Absolutely, that, you're reading it correctly.
That's how I'm reading it, but I wish he was here to clarify, because...
Not all houses in the old district have a carriage house, number one.
Well, not, not all. And two, oh, we have homes in the district. Most of this is for new development, and the homes that are already in the district are already in the district. Now, if someone were to buy a home...
No, he's rightfully concerned, because at today's code, you can demolish a home.
So, someone would demolish the whole home and just build whatever you want on there?
Yeah, he's, he's, yeah. He's, and rightfully concerned, I don't want to disregard, yeah. My concern becomes that we have a conflict in that today, the code says we need to be walkable, and you need to be close to the street, and that's a 10-foot offset, and a favorite of, you know, Councilmember Fosser, but at the same time, one, a car doesn't fit there, and so you end up with, you know, the lag. But, you know, cars aren't supposed to park on your lot, anyway, because we really don't want cars. Well, that's an inherent conflict. That's, that's not the reality of where we are today.
Got you, so, 'cause I'm, I've been here, you know, all my life, and I couldn't imagine someone buying one of these homes and demolishing it, and putting in something else, but I guess that is a possibility. So, back to, then, his point, there's nothing we can do that would prevent.
You can absolutely...
Not the demolish, but building something back that doesn't meet the character. Because it, doesn't that go back to the whole, "Let's put a pin here, and it's gotta look like everything around?"
It doesn't have to look like, it, it, that is, it can look like, it can give relief. So, if today, your home was demolished, for example, and somebody came and bought your lot, they can move your house as close as 10 feet. They can not provide a parking pad, and your house can go right there, and then an ADU at the back.
Right, if my house is demolished. But, and there's nothing we can, because I'm now, thinking that, I never thought about somebody knocking down one of these houses. So, now, thinking that way, there's nothing we can do to prevent them unless we do the certified local government.
Well, we can put in greater setbacks. I mean, because that's what he's asking. He's asking if you're parking in the third layer to get this congestion off, move your house up, park your car in the back, if you have a parking structure, period, because it encourages walkability, and this public and the private realm.
I feel like maybe that does need more discussion, no? Because there's nothing else we can do? There's nothing we can do?
So...
For our, for our downtown district, which we still haven't defined? What is the downtown district? Consider it the downtown district?
We need a better definition of what we want to do, and you need more than a character district. You need a zoning designated district that has mandated setbacks, and has mandated lot sizes, and has mandated requirements. And anybody who wants to deviate from that can come for a variance or can create a plan development district on those larger lots.
That's a, that's a greater discussion, just in the parking.
That's a different discussion, more in line with the comprehensive plan?
Doesn't even, that, uh, yes, in regards to, in the comprehensive plan, we want this particular area to not impede drainage, and therefore, lots should be from a bigger pers, you know, lot should be a bigger lot size, et cetera, et cetera.
And we could regulate the parking with the zoning designated district?
Yes.
So, that would, so we could do what we're gonna do now, and then come back later and talk about another...
So, I'll give you an example. In downtown Corpus Christi, I have no parking requirements, and that's twofold. One, it's on the bay, and it's, it's called Water Street for a reason. The water was right there, and it has significant drainage issues. So, I don't want to exacerbate the environmental concerns of oil and those kinds of things off of cars. So, we moved parking in the back, and we created parking structures. So, I don't have any mandated parking. That is a, it's called the downtown district. It has specific requirements on setbacks, parking spaces requirement, open space, all of those things that are standard. Character is hard to define, is very hard to define. So, if I say Cattlemen's District, what does that really mean? When I say Cattlemen's District, and when I say parking shall be market-driven?
No, I get it. So, so this is really not dead in the water, dead in the water. It can come back, and we can have a bigger discussion about this, the Old Town part later on. I think that's fair.
Yes.
We'll go with Councilmember Meyer, then Councilmember Plunkett, whose lights have been on.
Just to kind of wrap this all up, so we can, and I agree on all of these proposals, and I, I absolutely agree on the 20-foot setback recommendation, requirement, except for PDD, I get that. So, in the process, so we're not gonna drag this out, because, you know, this has been going on about a year and a half, over to you. Can we agree to, or we'll take a vote tonight? The PNC can hear the 20-foot, because Ms. Foster wants a recommendation from them for next week?
The PNC can define first layer, or make a recommendation. If you guys vote something tonight, and PNC hears it, opens a public hearing, and PNC wants the first layer to be 15 feet, when you hear it next, I'll come back and say, "PNC recommended, blank."
How many feet? And then our second reading, then we'll go with whatever they've said, and then we can approve it on the second. Okay, I just wanted to clarify how, how the process, thank you.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, two things. I just want to make sure that we keep in mind the built, the way things are built today, um, you know, on Main Street, uh, between, what, Pine and Spring, the setback is, what, 10 feet? Um, the, and, but then, you go down past Farm Street, and it's probably more like 50 feet. So, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about making 15 or 20, or, you know, setting any number that would, uh, keep, uh, that would make it difficult, or, or, I mean, would you even want somebody, you know, on Main Street to, you know, past Farm Street, north of Farm Street, to, you know, to, to bring their house up to, uh, you know, 15 feet or 20 feet from, you know, from the curb? Because now you can, you know, okay? I mean, now the, you know, the person next door is looking at the back of that house.
Yep. So, the non-conforming clause that's today, that says if that house, right at the corner of Main and Spring, that is at an odd angle, that is maybe 10 feet off of that corner, if everything within 200 feet around him is that, then he's able to do that again? Or if the lot has a unique characteristic?
Right, able to, but, I mean, there would also be able, it seems to me like, in the current code, the way it is today, if, you know, some, somebody's house burned down between Tracy's and the post office, and they wanted to, especially on the east side of the street, um, where all those houses are way far back, you know, the, the next person could come along and put it, you know, 10 feet, you know,
The way it is today.
Not in front of the sidewalk, but 10 feet behind the curb, right?
That's the way it is today.
Right, and so, that's concerning. And so, I'm trying to make sure that we make it flexible enough that we don't have the pendulum swing the other way. And, because I, I do believe what's in there now, with, as far as closeness, especially when you get outside this district, is ridiculous, you know? But, you know, I just want to make sure we don't swing too far the other direction, and, and keep, you know, a good thing from, you know, going on anywhere else. Um, also, I'm concerned with the second layer shall, um, because you could still do the third layer if you want to. So, you should still be able to do that. Because it seems like if you say the word, you, you know, parking, or the parking structure, or whatever, shall be in the second layer, well, I don't think you should keep somebody from putting it in the third. Well, that was, I know it doesn't say that in what we're, but what we were talking about, was changing to May.
He says May.
I know. Right, exactly.
You could say shall begin. Shall begin in the second layer.
All righty, with any other questions for, uh...
It, you guys are having trouble. Imagine staff, there's three books to go through, well, now two, because we don't have the, um, we don't have the, the beautification book. We don't have that one anymore. But, um, just the conflict among the codes is, is a strenuous task to try to train anybody through, and to try to jump backwards and forward, so.
And a really good example of what could happen is, look at Austin. That's a good example of what is happening if we do not get these amendments.
And I, I absolutely sympathize with, you know, Pablo's concerns about what could happen to the downtown character. And that could happen today. I'm, I'm absolutely concerned, yes. Those 10-feet setbacks are, are mighty short. Uh, and when, you know, when you get to no minimum lot size, and you come to three, four, five, and six, into what had one, then, you know, yes, there, it is concerning.
Okay, council staff has laid this item out.
Clear as mud.
We've, we've asked our, laid several items out, and we've asked, we've asked questions and made comments. Uh, if there are no others, I'd like to open this up for a public hearing. Madam City Secretary, do you have anybody who wishes to speak on this item?
No, sir, we do not.
The only public comment we received is the aforementioned, uh, comment from, uh, Mr. Serna. We've, we've discussed it. He is in opposition to, uh, to the item with an explanation. Seeing no other comments, we will close the public hearing. And I'm going to suggest, unless I heard differently, that we take up as a single items, uh, item B, D, and E, and because there was suggested change on C, that we take it up separately. So, I will entertain a motion on B, item B, D, and E.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fosser.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll?
Sir, well, that, that motion was to pass it with no changes.
No changes on B, D, and E.
Thank you, sir, for the clarification. Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll go to item 10C. I'll be happy to entertain a motion with any suggested amendments.
So, um, I motioned that we approve item 10C with the following change to item seven in the code language, and it should read residential garage facades, if provided, may, sorry, let me start over. Residential garage facades, if provided, shall begin in the second or third layer, and onsite parking is allowed in the first layer.
Second.
So, we have a motion as second on, on item 10C with the amendment to 6.3.006, parking B7. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, I will, uh, Madam City Secretary, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosser?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you for the robust discussion, and unanimous motion, uh, unanimous action. Now, we move to item 10F. Conduct a public hearing, consider an act on the first reading in order number 2024-50 of the City of Bastrop, Texas, a minimal of ordinances relating to the Chapter 14 of the Bastrop Building, B3 Code, Article 6.3, General Lot Standards, Section 6.3.006, Parking A and B, 1 and 2, as attached in Exhibit A, provided for findings of fact, repealer, severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting in, and move to include on January 14th, 2025, consent agenda for second reading. Again, Ms. Higgins.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this item is related to parking as well, but it's not related to parking in the first layer. Currently, in the B3 Code, parking is not required onsite at, it's not required. You don't, you don't have a minimum required onsite. In P3, it stated that it will be market-driven. Like, as the city manager has stated, that's very hard to define, since we don't have anything tangible to tie it back to. And so, this amendment is suggested, I'm sorry, um, where is it? There we go. To require two parking spaces per primary dwelling unit, and one space per, per ADU, which is additional dwelling unit. And so, this would help relieve that congestion on the street so that our emergency responders can actually access these lots, because it will require two parking spaces on a lot. The garage counts, if it's a one-car garage, it counts as one spot. If it's a two-car garage, it counts as two spots. And then you have that parking pad in front of it, which counts as your additional spots as well. And there's, sorry, part of this is also to include clarification on allowing shared parking, as the city manager has previously stated.
Do we have a determination on what a two-car, the size of a two-car garage?
I don't believe so. Miss, I've stepped out, but I don't believe that we have set regulations on sizing requirements for the parking spaces.
Well, my, like, my garage is considered a two-car garage, but that's only if you've got two Mini Coopers to be able to get two of them in there. And it's just, and I just wondered if, because allowing two, saying it's a two-car garage, when in actuality, it's not reasonable. It's, I, I, I think that at some point in time, we're going to have to make a determination of what a minimum two-car garage size would be, and I...
Or a parking space in general, what the minimum size for a parking space in general.
Thank you. Uh, we have several questions and comments. Oh, you threw with your presentation?
Yes.
We have several, uh, and I do not know who went up first, but I'm going to go ahead and call on Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're, um, we've batted back and forth the definition of an ADU. I want to make sure we define that, and I completely agree with the mayor's comments about the...
ADU is very clearly defined in the code as accessory dwelling unit. There, it's in the definitions, as well as described throughout the code.
Old definition or current definition? We've, because we talked about, um, you know, like, how do you define, I mean, a dwelling unit? Like, we wanted to exclude things like, there are she sheds, and workshops, and things like that, I believe. Because that, I don't believe, will drive additional parking requirements. Whereas, if it has a kitchen and a bedroom and a bathroom, then that starts to sound like a dwelling unit to me.
We have, um, two separate definitions in the code. We have an accessory structure, and then an accessory dwelling unit.
And they're well-defined?
Yes.
I apologize for being ignorant.
They're building official up here.
So, accessory dwelling unit would be def, basically, just a dwelling unit that has the basic components of a bathroom, a kitchen. So, a pool house wouldn't be an accessory dwelling. A she shed wouldn't be an accessory, but a true dwelling that would be used as a residential use would be accessory dwelling.
Good, so it could have...
Dwelling is a key word.
So, it could have a bathroom?
It would be, would have a bathroom.
Or like, an outdoor kitchen, could have a kitchen, but it wouldn't be a dwelling unit if it didn't have a bathroom to go with it, or a bedroom, or something like that.
The place where you get in struggles, as enforcement goes, when somebody calls a bath house, a pool house, that meets all the requirements, a dwelling unit, and they're using it for a dwelling unit, that's where you get into, is that really a dwelling unit or a pool house?
Right, and that's what, right, well, that's why I think it's important to have a good, solid definition of the...
And again, the kind of rule is, if you've got a kitchen, you've got a bathroom, you can live and sleep there, it's a dwelling unit.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosser.
Thank you. To be considered a parking space, what degree of improvement is required? I know it's written somewhere, I couldn't find it.
Um, I'm not sure. It doesn't, our code doesn't specify what is required as far as improvements for a parking space, although it is required that it is improved by some means.
By some means, like, because one of mine is dirt. Like, would that be allowed in the new code? No, okay, not dirt.
Go ahead. Mulch, totally, I have them.
No, so typically, a parking space is defined as an improved surface, either with, um, you can have colici with kind of a concrete ribbon that prohibits the colici from getting into the storm drain, um, concrete, asphalt. But it is an improved surface. Um, there is a modification that we're trying to make, too, with, like, concrete strips, where there's maybe grass in the center, but it is some kind of, um, non-permeable surface, or semi-permeable, being the colici, or something like that.
Would porous concrete be an option for that? I mean, it kind of looks like, okay, that's in the acceptable. Okay, so not dirt, not mulch, got it.
So, we would address that in the drainage code. Um, because I do want to give credit for pervious surface. So, pervious pavers, pervious concrete, again, maybe the, the driveway isn't completely concrete. It's got a strip of grass in the middle of it, reduce cost, reduce heat, allow, so.
Oh, and crush granite, that's another one, and that's kind of akin to downtown.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So, is this, is this also the item where we're reducing the ADUs from two to one?
No, ma'am, that has not gone through PNC yet, just parking.
That one didn't go, okay.
That one will go to PNC next Thursday.
Okay, then I, my question's for next, next time.
Mayor Protam Kirkland.
Yes, so, um, I don't actually want to punt on the size of the garage topic, uh, but more specifically, the size of a parking spot. It, it sort of, it does indirectly define the size of the garage, if you're gonna count those as parking spots. Um, but I would like for us to, and I don't have a recommendation on what it should be, but maybe we can derive one, um, define what a parking spot means by size. You know, and I can start out as a, I mean, I think you're looking at 10 feet wide. You know, six-foot-wide car, two feet on either side, maybe 25 feet long, something like that.
Nine by 18 is a standard parking stall.
Okay.
10 by 20 is medium, and then you get into some of the oversized, uh, parking.
Okay, 10 by 20, okay. The other thing is that I actually prefer that we do a one-space per bedroom for the houses, in terms of number of spots. And I want to explicitly state that those spots cannot block a sidewalk. Um, sidewalks are required in our code, we're talking about new development here. And so, uh, you know, if you're gonna put three or four spots, parking spots, in a house, I mean, yes, that can still be a two-car garage with the, you know, 20-foot-wide driveway going up, but then it needs to be deep enough where you can park that car without blocking the sidewalk. That, that just needs to be part of our code, so that the, the houses have long enough driveways to meet the, the minimum requirement. Yeah, those are my three things. I, and I had a question, does the garage meet the parking requirements? requirements? But we answered that as affirmatively. So, you know, define the size of a parking spot, it can't block sidewalks, and one space per bedroom is kind of what I'm thinking.
And so a three-bedroom home with an ADU would be met with the two-car garage and the two parking stalls outside the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is pretty much what you have in all of the, you know, snout house neighborhoods, right? But I just, I don't want to go smaller than that. If, if the house is a three-bedroom with an ADU. Now, Mayor, you were talking about garage sizes. I suspect a, you know, 20 by 20-foot garage is still not really big enough to use and park two cars in. Yeah.
James, you want to address standard double-car parking garage sizes?
Well, it'd be you at one, six inches from the wall. If it's.
And you'd think then.
Again, you go back, we talked about earlier, a typical parking space is nine by 18, 10 by 20. A small garage is 20 by 20. Can you really fit a car in there? But that's usually for construction is your minimum garage, two-car garage. The problem gets back in enforcement when they want to convert that garage into a living area, now you've lost those parking spaces. So we've got to keep that in mind, too.
Well, you know, in, in that model, I think we would look at it from the building permit side, and if someone wants to convert that into a living space and they don't have parking spots, then they're going to have to ask for a variance, or they just can't, can't do it.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I'll give you, I'll give you an example of, so parking in the first layer, so that house that we mentioned on Main and Spring that has a circular drive?
Right.
If the lot is wide enough, you could have two driveway entrances. If the lot is not wide enough, then we're going to end up with people seeking variances if they have indeed converted their garage. And, you know, hopefully, the lots are set back enough, especially in Old Town, I don't think it's going to be an issue. I think it becomes an issue in the newer developments where the parking aprons are already really short.
Yeah, I mean, as, as we talk about this, I contemplate that, you know, these minimum standards are still going to create neighborhoods like, you know, Piney Creek Bend, where, you know, you've got houses parked all the way down one side and, you know, because you can get four cars in the driveways, in many of those driveways, plus two in the garage, that's six spaces. There's probably, you know, close to zero, six-car garage, sorry, six-bedroom houses in that neighborhood. I mean, there may be a few, but it's, it's very small. And so we're talking about meeting the minimum rules, but fundamentally, you're still going to have cars parked down, down the street, which is kind of what we're trying to avoid.
Well, in Piney Creek Bend, the HOA wouldn't allow an ADU, number one.
Okay.
And that's the same thing in Riverside Grove, that's the same thing in some of the newer neighborhoods. If you were to have a rehabilitation of a lot, for example, that's when we begin to talk about how do these things meet. The, the real issue goes back to Councilmember Lee Street with discussion. We narrowed our streets through various planning methods over the last 25 years, under the belief that narrower streets will slow parking, will slow cars down. That's proven, you know, if we could run some statistics, I'm sure that's proven to not be the case. And so as we revisit parking and the spillage of parking, right now, no parking is required. And, and that's where we begin to see the rehabilitation of some of these lots, and especially on North Main, for example, where you can stick as many as you can with high impervious cover requirements and no parking requirements, that it begins to have a spillover effect.
Yeah. So anyway, these minimal changes are still likely to create neighborhoods with lots of parking on the streets, but in terms of bare minimums, the 10 by 20 parking spot, those spots cannot block the sidewalk. As part of the design of the house, the minimums cannot block the sidewalk, and at least one space, parking space per bedroom in the house. That's what I would recommend that we add to what we have here.
All righty. See, no further discussion. I believe with, if I, help me remember, I think we had the public hearing, did we not?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
No, no hurting having two, just in case.
That's why, that's why I'm depending on y'all. If y'all have no other questions for staff, we will open up this public hearing. Madam City Secretary, do you have anybody to speak?
No, sir, we do not.
We will close this public hearing. It's been laid out, questions have been asked. Well, I'll entertain a motion with any appropriate amendments.
Certainly debate time.
Well, you can, we can, we can make a motion and ask questions.
Yeah. So a motion that we approve item 10C, but that we also add a definition of a minimum parking spot of 10 by 20. We specify explicitly in the code that the minimum parking spaces required may not block sidewalks, and that there be a minimum of one space per bedroom.
Can I make a correction to that? We're on item 10F.
Well, I wrote it next to 10C. So, yes, item 10F. Thank you.
Second.
We've had the item, had a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland on 10F, and a second by Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion or questions? Councilmember Fossler?
Yes, I have any questions for the size. You said 10 by 20, and that's for a standard stall or a standard parking spot?
Parking spot.
Like, if there was no garage over it?
Parking spot.
10 by 20? And I see on the Googler, sometimes eight by, eight by 18? Anyway, is that like?
You can give credit for compact cars in an eight by, I don't know, eight by 16, 17 for the really tiny microcars?
Okay, it just seems pretty fixed. Okay, and P and Z did talk about a parking ratio also, as they, they talked that through and landed on this. So you're wanting to do both?
I am.
And more?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a point of clarity? Are you suggesting to replace the two parking spaces per primary, or in addition?
No, replace.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, so change the minimum from two parking spaces to one per bedroom.
Perfect. I just wanted to double check.
We have additional questions, Councilmember?
Once again, like, since we're making changes on the dais, if people have public comment, please come out for the next time that this is on the agenda, because this is a kind of an abbreviated time for public comment, and I would appreciate hearing from folks on this. I'm good.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. No further questions indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to...
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Very good job. Move on to item 11. Items for individual consideration, item 11A, consider an act on resolution number 2024-82, accepting notice of withdrawal by the Bohorquez Law Firm, PC, from representing the city, and resignation of City Attorney Alan Bohorquez, dated November 25, 2024, and directing the city manager to coordinate a transition of services, providing for repealing clause and establish an effective date. Madam City Manager?
The item speaks for itself. I would like to give Mr. Bohorquez an opportunity to make any address to the council that he wishes.
Mr. City Attorney, it's your turn to make a...
And thank him for his services.
Make a comment, please, sir.
Sure. Thank you, Madam City Manager, Mayor, Council. My resignation speaks for itself. I don't have much to add. Serving Bastrop the last seven years has definitely been a highlight in my career. I have great fondness for this organization and for the community, and I'm proud of all the work that we've done together. I think we're at a point to where the relationship has sort of run its course, and perhaps it's time for y'all to have some new representation, and I'll go off and serve other communities and let y'all recruit someone new to guide you. So thank you for the opportunity, and I appreciate all the support that I've received the last seven years.
Thank you, sir. I, I for one, just made a translucent caliber of legal services that the Bohorquez Law Firm has provided to the city since 2017. I've been here from the very start in one way, shape, or form. The integrity and professionalism with which Mr. Bohorquez has led the city attorney's office will be difficult to replicate going forward. Beginning in 2017, he and his staff have closed out open lawsuits to the city's benefit and has addressed many issues, dealing with state government matters, again, to the city's benefit. His firm's expertise in all things municipal, whether the city charter or land use codes or real estate deals, among many more, has served this city well. Alan, I wish you and your firm the best wishes in the future. You will be missed. Does anybody else have anything to add or to, to this agenda item? Councilmember Fossler?
I just want to thank you for your seven years of dedication to this city. I've only been to, able to experience six months of, on the dais, of, as you experience your work behind the scenes, but I really appreciate being fortified by your experience and wisdom, and I appreciate the seven years you've given to this city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I too want to thank you for your years of service. I almost said it, AT&amp;T, that's my paid job, for the City of Bastrop. One of the things I've always told Alan is, I, I didn't call Alan a lot, but whenever I did call him, he almost never told me what I wanted to hear. And I respected him for that, because you got to be able to take the hit, right? You, you don't get what you want just because you sit on council. And he was always straightforward with me, and he don't, he did it because, not to be difficult with me, I know, but because he wanted me to be right, and he wanted me, he wanted to protect the city, and he wanted to protect this council. So he wasn't going to tell me something I just wanted to hear. And I would always tell him, never tell me what I want to hear. But I appreciate that, and I appreciate your kindness and your service. I know that you will continue to be successful wherever you go, and you should be proud of the work that you have done here in Bastrop, because it's been great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have another comment? Thank you. Seeing no further comment, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Plunkett. Seeing no further discussion indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
I want to say no, but I'm going to say yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council, and best wishes to Mr. Bohorquez and his law firm. He will be remaining in place until the 31st of, of this month, and, and then he's graciously agreed that should other issues, ongoing issues, call for his attention, that he will be available. But thank you again, sir. Item 11B, consider an act on resolution number R-2024-181, approving and authorizing an engagement letter with the Chapman Firm for legal services pertaining to construction of public work projects, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents upon request, providing for findings of fact, repeater, severability, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Mr. Rosales?
Mayor, Council, this is pertaining to the previous item. We have some engagement with certain attorneys that were through the Bohorquez Law Firm, and we have some that we would like to continue. This is Jerry Chapman, or sorry, Chapman Firm. Jerry is our attorney through the Chapman Law Firm. She represents us on some of the wastewater treatment plant, number three litigation and stuff that's going on, as well as some other construction projects. And so this is the engagement letter that we're signing directly with the firm. The previous engagement letter was, was through the city attorney's office, and so since that's changing, we're going to engage directly. Any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Rosales? Seeing none indicated, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Meyer. No further discussion or questions indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move to item 11C. Consider an act on first reading of orders number 2024-51, and ordinance ordering a special election be held on Saturday, May 3, 2025, for the recall of Mayor L. according to the Bastrop Home Rule Charter, designated polling places with the city, establishing other procedures for the conduct of special, conduct of special election, including providing that the election is to be held as a joint election in conjunction with Bastrop County, providing severability clause, providing an effective date. Ms. Parker?
Mayor?
Yes.
With your permission, I'd like to make a motion to table this item until January 14th. Postpone it?
We have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland to table this until the January 14th meeting. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossler?
Yes.
Council... Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 11D. Consider an act on resolution number R-2024-179, supporting of employees under the [inaudible] Irma G. Parker, Victoria Pinchick, Viviana Nicole Andres, Alicia Perkins, Doug Haggerty, Kathy Danielson, James E. Cowley, Laura Allen, John Edleton, Curtis Hancock, Jamie Jaime Saldivar, Jimmy Campbell, and Tim Vandy Vorty, as listed and named by Councilmember Cheryl Lee. Directing the document with associated exhibits to be prepared for the certified copy delivered to each named employee. Directing that this document be provided to human resources for inclusion in each employee personnel file, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date, submitted by Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland and Councilmember Meyer, but it looks like City Secretary is going to lay this item out.
At the meeting that this was all discussed, Councilmember Meyer and Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland requested that this, a resolution and be prepared, and something to be said for each of our employees, so that nothing, they wouldn't be damaged by anything that was contained in this document. Before you is the resolution, and behind the resolution is a commendation for each employee. There is one employee that was not included in the PowerPoint presentation, but was mentioned in the report, and we will present that to you in January. Staff requests approval.
Move to her proof.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett. I have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland. We have a comment. I believe, Councilmember Meyer, your light was on first.
I just want to say thank you so much to staff and our employees, because you're what makes Bastrop great. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Fossler?
Thanks, yeah. I thought this was a great idea to include this in their files. My question is, page, what, 267, the first whereas, can we do that generous editor's note here as well, because it's the same words, upon a duly made and seconded to allow rebuttal from the city manager, Correa Trevino, without a point, counterpoint, to address allegations? I'm looking at the top of page three, 267. It's the first whereas, first whereas on that page, and I was wondering if we could add the same verbiage, a rebuttal from the city manager, Correa Trevino, without point, counterpoint, to address the allegations. It's like this consistent from the minutes, that, that verbiage was taken from the minutes. It wasn't exactly from the motion, but it was from the whole conversation.
So what are you wanting? Oh, so what do you want? Okay. No, that wasn't the same one. Was it?
Were we able to note that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So I do have a comment to make regarding this matter, because I wasn't able to make a comment at that meeting. As city council members, it's our duty to review and investigate business of the city, and after a thorough investigation into actions and spending by the city manager, I have concerns. I brought those concerns to the council in an executive session, because I wanted, I wanted to protect the employees.
Point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
These points have nothing to do with this resolution. Nothing at all.
Actually, it does. And Mayor, I have the floor.
Duly noted. Continue, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Motion to appeal.
After the...
Second.
So this is, this is, we are stifling somebody's ability to make, make a comment?
We're getting back on topic.
This is on topic. You haven't heard my speech.
I have, I have, I have a, a motion and a second to, to squash Ms. Lee's comments. Is any further discussion on this before we take a vote? Is any further discussion on this before we take a vote?
I would ask, Councilmember Lee, could you describe better the subject of your comments?
The protection of employees.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
No.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
No.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee, I apologize, but a majority of three have voted to not allow you to speak by point of order. That is, that's a sad commentary. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call...
She did. She called roll.
No, she, no, she, no, she did not. Madam City Secretary, if you will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Can I ask for clarification? Because we just voted on the motion to appeal. We appealed.
The clarification is whether or not you want to act on Resolution 2024-179, supportive of employees as named.
Perfect. Thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion in support of our employees passes unanimously, and I want to also express my appreciation for all the work that our staff does. We'll move on to item 11E. Consider An Act On Resolution Number R-2024-176 Appointing Michael Burkhart To Place For The Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporations Board For Return Beginning December 2024 And Ending In September of 2027, Receiving Confirmation By The City Council The Appointment And Providing For An Effective Date. Mr. Burkhart is a resident and homeowner in Hunter's Crossing. That brings the Hunter's Crossing LGC or PID board up to full status. We have four members of the four resident homeowners. We have two business entities. We have a city council member, and we have our city manager as members of that board. A substantial change over what the board was just 10 years ago when it was made up of a developer and certain legal council. I respectfully request your confirmation of Mr. Burkhart's appointment to place for...
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Kirkland. I have a second from Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Burkhart, and I appreciate that. Item 11F, Consider An Act On First Reading, Orderance Number 2024-45, The City of Bastrop, Texas, Amending Chapter 13, Article 13.02, Section 13.02.012, Providing For Line Extension Agreements For The Extension Of Certain Water And Wastewater Lines, Providing For Findings Of Fact, Repeater, Severability, Codification, Effective Date, Proper Notice, And Move To Include On January 14, 2024 Consent Agenda For Second Reading. Ms. Andres.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. For point of clarity, this should be for January 14, 2025. So there was a typo on the agenda, just wanted to note that. Okay. So essentially, this proposal before you tonight, see in chapter 13, article 13.02, section 13.02.012, and essentially, it makes in language for a line extension provision so that the city can enter into said agreement with developers. Implementing this kind of language will be very beneficial to the city because it'll allow us to convey costs that can be incurred during development to the developers. Essentially, I will not read all of this for you, but these are the key points that are changing in it. And so we are augmenting some of the responsibility from the director of public works to the city engineer designee. And one of my favorite parts of the language is that it does include any costs associated with the city's acquisition of utility service rights to serve the development. This is going to be beneficial when we run into territories that are under the CCN of an alternative utility such as Aqua, we'll be able to negotiate and then pass that cost through to the developer so that that cost is covered and the city doesn't have to bear that cost. Essentially, the development process will be that the developer will submit an application. It'll be their responsibility to furnish any necessary documentation, such as the proposed line extensions, maps, diagrams. This is beneficial to the city because it essentially places the responsibility of going through the feasibility exercise on the developer, which is, once again, usually an engineering cost that sometimes the city has had to cover. So that's exciting for me to see. Additionally, after they submit this information, the city engineer will review it and prepare a preliminary report and submit that to the city manager. That report will also include any costs that would be needed to serve the development. So it'll give us an upfront picture of exactly what's going to be required, which is super beneficial. After that, it's going to go to the city manager, who will present it to council. Council will have the opportunity to approve or deny, and if approved, then the city manager can move to execute any necessary documentation. This evening, staff is recommending that you approve the first reading of this ordinance change and move to include it on the consent agenda for January 14, 2025.
Ms. Andres has laid out this item. I will entertain a... Do you have any discussion for the...
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Fosler. Any further discussion? Councilmember Fosler.
Great work.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion indicated. Councilmember Lee, your light is still on. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. We'll move to item 11G. Consider An Act On Resolution Number R-2024-170 Approving And Authorizing Execution Of The First Amendments To The Veridian Development Agreement Between The City Of Bastrop, Continental Homes Of Texas LP Regarding The Valverde Development, Providing For Severability, Providing For Repel, Providing For Effective Date. Mr. Rosales.
Mayor, counsel, to give you some background, we approved Resolution R 2065. It was approved, approved the initial development agreement with Valverde. It was actually called Veridian at the time. That was in 2021. In July, I brought a Resolution R-2024-73. It was approved by council on July 23rd, but we never executed by both parties because we continued some further discussions. So I'm, we brought Resolution R 2024-73. It amended the initial DA to clarify some of the parties relating to the off-site wastewater facilities, who is responsible for what portions, which allowed us to construct the wastewater line for Valverde down 969. We have this amendment that I'm bringing forward right now includes the above amendment to clarify the parties still. It also adds cost for pumping hall services not to exceed $200,000, and it also includes Valverde's contribution of $211,570 to the 300, or sorry, the $3,200,000 off-site wastewater line cost. The developer has signed this one, so there'll be no more negotiation. We're just asking for your approval. Any questions?
Council assistant city manager has laid this item out. Any questions or comments to the city manager or to staff? Seeing none indicated, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from, I believe it's from Councilmember Lee, and a second from Councilmember Fosler. Seeing no questions or comments indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item 11H. Consider An Act On Resolution Number R-2024-175 Approving The 2025 City Meeting Schedule Attached To Exhibit A And Providing For An Effective Date. Ms. Pincic.
Mayor, counsel, it's that time of year again. We're getting close to the end of the year, so I have brought forth the 2025 city council regular meeting schedule as laid out, and if you have any questions, I will answer. Otherwise, that's it.
Counsel, our assistant city secretary has laid this item out. It's there for y'all's reading and perusal. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fosler, a second from Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Question.
I have a question from Councilmember Lee.
So this year, we had National Night Out on the same day as the council meeting. Did we fix that in here to prevent it? I don't know what day it's on next year, but...
Not sure. That's a beef with Chief Stefanik to tell her not to schedule a National Night Out on a council day. Chief Stefanik.
So that's scheduled by...
Critic.
No, I thought all cities did it at the same time.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so then that's on you. First Tuesday of October, so that would be...
So there would not be a conflict.
It wouldn't be a conflict anyway. Okay, thank you.
We run into a conflict with National Night Out and TML, so FYI.
I think TML is at the end of the month next year. At the end of October next year, so there may not be a conflict.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a motion and I have a second. No other questions indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Moving on to item 11I. Consider An Act On Resolution Number R-2024-183 Authorizing Participation Of The State Of Texas To The Austin Attorney General In The Latest Global Opioid Settlement With Kroger And Approving Settlement Participation Form Attached As Exhibit A. Mr. Barroquez.
Mayor and counsel, this is another settlement that was negotiated by the Texas Attorney General's Office on behalf of all local governments in Texas. We have an opportunity to participate by approving this resolution. We are not in a position to negotiate any particular terms or conditions because we did not bring our own lawsuit against the pharmacies for their role in the opioid epidemic. My recommendation is to approve this, and then the actual amount of settlement funds given to the city will be ultimately determined by the state.
Counsel, our city attorney has laid this item out. I will entertain a...
Motion to approve.
I have a...
Second.
Motion from Mayor Protem Kirkland, a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to item 11J. Consider An Act On Resolution Number R-2024-164 Allowing The Mayor To Promote And Advocate The City Of Bastrop With Legislative And Administrative Bodies Leading Up To And During The 89th Legislative Session, Rescinding Section 1, Item 7, From Resolution Number R-2024-049 Adopted April 9, 2024. Counsel, I brought this forward because we've been beginning earnest discussions with our elected body, as well as some of the administrative folks at the state of Texas, as well as some of our regional organization, and I would ask your consideration of this We'll entertain a motion.
So I motioned that we table this till January 14th. Postpone.
Second.
So we're tabling this item once again.
Yeah, I had requested that this come back as a workshop for us to talk about the, I don't know, the strategy, the things that we want to advocate for, and it didn't land there, and we're about halfway through our agenda at this point, so I don't want to propose we do that tonight. So we'll just bring it back as a workshop item on the 14th.
The legislative agenda was fairly generic, consistent with what we've done in the past, but we have a motion, we have a second, I'm sorry, we have one person scheduled to speak on this item. Linda Curtis?
I'm not sure I can do it all. Okay. Isn't it being tabled?
It is, it is being tabled, but you're welcome not to speak.
Okay, if you're going to table it, I'm cool.
You're good. Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second to table item 11J. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Gee, I mean, yes. What?
Yes.
What did you say?
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Present? I mean, yes.
Counsel, we'll move on to items E for individual consideration purchasing. 12, 12A, Consider An Act On Resolution Number R-2024-167 Approving A Construction Contract With 304 Construction LLC For Not To Exceed Amount Of $494,265 And Zero Cents For The Construction Of The Fairview Cemetery Column Burial Project Attached In Exhibit A Authorize City Manager To Execute All Necessary Documents Provided For Repealing Clause And Establishing Effective Date. Ms. Wick.
Hi, good evening. Is there the... Okay, that'll work. So the item you have before you today is for the construction contract award for the Fairview Cemetery Column Burial Project. Back in July of 2023, the city entered into a professional services contract with Luck Design Team for the design and construction phase services of the Block Nine improvements. Last month, we received five bids for this construction services for the columnarium project, and the Luck Design Team provided a recommendation to award the construction contract to 304 Construction, who is the lowest responsible bidder. Next. The scope of work for this construction contract is flat work to include concrete and paving improvements, as you can see shown in the diagram to the right, vertical construction to include a shelter and masonry work, and then the columnarium installation as well, which will include masonry work. Next. The limits of work, so I highlighted Block Nine for y'all, and then the blue portion will only be the construction contract, but just to give you a frame of reference. And the entire picture shows Fairview Cemetery. And the project funding, so it's a not to exceed a limit of $494,000, and it'll be from a loan from the Fiscal Year 25 General Fund to be reimbursed by the Cemetery Optimering Fund from 25. This item was included in the adopted budget, and the schedule will be provided when the project is completed. And I think that's the last slide. Just a recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Meyer. Mayor Protem Kirkland's light is on.
Yes. Is this everything for this project?
This will complete the project, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion, I have a second. Seeing no further discussion indicated, Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't realize it was Councilmember Lee. It left the dice. Thank you, counsel. Motion passes. Move on to 12B. Consider An Act On Resolution Number R-20-173 Ordering Contract For The Maintenance Mowing Landscape And Service Of Parks And Public Buildings To Brightview Landscape Services Inc. In The Amount Of $90,736 As Attached In Exhibit A Authorizing City Manager To Execute All Necessary Documents For The Contract Provided For Repealing Clause And Establishing Effective Date. Ms. Moore, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
In October, we put out a bid for several different projects, mowing projects. We did separate in the past, we had one big contract for parks and public places and all the right of ways. We have separated that, and then we also have the bid for Hunter's Crossing. The first one we'll talk about, we got the bids that came in, and the lowest bid was with Bright View. They are a contractor that's currently with us at this time. They did bring the lowest bid. I do want to point out that there have been some conversations with Bright View about their, the job performance, and they have assured me that they will continue, they will, they will do better. I'll just put it like that. The reason we considered this one is because there's a fifty-three thousand dollar difference in the bid for the next bid. I didn't have that in the budget, so I am recommending approval for Bright View.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Moore? Councilmember Meyer.
Yes, so I've noticed on items twelve B, C, and D, we, we have community lawn care that is located locally.
Yes, ma'am.
Does not bid on twelve B. Is there a reason?
They, they did not. They voluntarily said that the reason they did not is because they were getting into the field and they wanted to get their foot in the door, and they didn't want to take on more than they thought they could handle at first.
And the other ones, I didn't, I know Bright, Bright View is out of Austin. Is there any other local ones in on those bids?
No, ma'am, there were not.
Okay, they're all out of town.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I'm glad I made it back because I had just a question kind of on the same line. Why did we have to bid each one separately? Is it because they come out of different funds, or what was the reason why we just didn't do one blanket bid?
Because the Parks and Public Places falls under the Parks and Recreation Department, and the right of ways are part of streets and drainage and public works.
So the different funds? I figured that's what it was.
Well, it's still the same general fund. But it's just in different departments.
I think too, the bigger conversation is we have had issues with the current provider, and, you know, to receive a much better service, we opened it up to allow others to be able to apply, because when it's a giant conglomeration, you really knock out all the little guys.
Yeah, we, yeah, that, I was fixing to say the same thing. We, we decided to break it apart to see if we could get multiple vendors and have multiple different contractors doing. It seemed too large for Bright View to do all of the contract, and thus the issues we were having, so we figured if we broke them down into smaller RFPs, we would get more vendors, and it would, we could focus, have focus, the directors focus on their specific contract, and that's how.
Under their specific funding.
Yes, correct, and you'll see another one come forward for water, wastewater mowing that will come forward here shortly as well.
And the Parks and Recre, if I'm not mistaken, the Parks and Recreation needs are different relative to Hunter's Crossing based upon the level of service and the frequency of service, or are they pretty much the same?
It's, it, it's different, but it is the same. So the, the expectation is that they take care of the grounds. Hunter's Crossing has got a lot of irrigation and other, it's a larger area, actually.
I like the fact we separated. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. So since it's been brought up that, that Bright View has been questionable on their performance, in the contract, do we have conditions or metrics or standards to meet up where we can have recourse?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, we can, we can get rid of, I mean, get out of the contract at any point.
Thank you.
All righty, we've asked the questions, and I, it's.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim, and a second from Councilmember Lee. No further discussion indicated. Madam, City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We'll move to item twelve C, considering actual resolution of R dash two zero two four dash one seven four, awarding contract to the maintenance mowing and landscaping services for Hunter's Crossing to Community Lawn Care and Maintenance LLC in amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. As attached in Exhibit A, authorize city manager to execute all necessary documents for the contract provided for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Moore.
Again, this is a different contractor. This one is a local. It is for Hunter's Crossing. They're excited about getting the contract and get, and doing the work with the city. I'm excited to work with them.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, seeing no further discussion indicated. Madam, City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to item twelve D, considering actual resolution number R dash two zero two four dash one seven two, awarding the contract maintenance mowing and landscaping services for the public right of ways to Community Lawn Care and Maintenance LLC in amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. As attached in Exhibit A, authorize city manager to execute all necessary documents for the contract provided for repealing clause and establishing effective date. Mr. Edelman.
Mayor and counsel, this mowing contract on the highways, there was some gaps in areas that city crews had to go in and, and take care of because they wasn't addressed in the original, but this has all been changed now, so it'll go from twenty to Tahitian, and then the gateways and stuff, and the exhibit that you have in your package will show all those areas. I look forward to working with community because they're locals, so I think it's going to be a good fit.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Councilmember Fosler. Mr. Edelman, does this also include the state right of way contract? Is that under a different, or requirements? Is that under a different contract?
This is mowing on the state road.
So a portion of this, a portion of this is, is paid for, if not all of it's paid for by Texas Auto, am I correct?
No. No, it's, it's through us.
Through our Texas Auto maintenance agreement.
That's, that's where I was going.
Yeah, I was fixing to say it's the Texas Auto maintenance agreement that's been signed and approved every time they turn over the, the right of ways to the city, and then we have a maintenance agreement that we must maintain.
So, so our maintenance agreement, so some of that is not strictly from our coffers? It, it's a, we're a pass through for the state money? Thank you. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. No further discussion, no questions. Madam, City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to item twelve E, considering actual resolution number R dash two zero two four dash one seven one, approving change order one with BAR Constructors Inc. in the amount of two hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and forty-nine cents for the construction of the redesigned stormwater outfall structure as part of the wastewater treatment plant number three project. As attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the execution of all necessary documents, bone requests, and providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Mr. Rosales.
Mayor, counsel, you're going to see a bunch of these coming forward. We're working through wastewater treatment plant phase number one, financial documents. This is going to be change order number one, BAR Constructors, Constructors Incorporated. The change order only addresses the outfall redesign construction cost due to the failure, so there's a failure. KSA did the engineering redesign, and then BAR had a subcontractor, Black Fox, complete the work. Staff and engineering, we went out, approved the final construction. Everything looks good. It's way different than the original design. The change orders, you'll see other change orders coming forward as we work through the financial phase. We're going to, we're, we're working on closing out the, the treatment plant. Part of that, we'll see all the final change orders. I believe we're going to bring four change orders to you. This one, we pushed ahead instead of trying to group everything and work through a huge change order. Black Fox is a very small company. It's a mom and pop shop. They are out the funding as a sub from BAR. BAR couldn't pay them until we pay BAR, and so we're doing a courtesy to Black Fox to help get their employees paid. So we moved this all the way up. We're going to do change order number one, and this is only for the construction services. So you'll see some, another change order that'll come forward. It'll be for the redesign and costs associated with the redesign, but this is only for Black Fox.
And for just the council's edification, some of this is coming out of retainage.
Yes.
We hope to recoup some through the legal process as we continue to try to close the plant that is years overdue.
Yes.
I've also understood that there's, there's several contractors or subcontractors that have not been paid, and so we're still addressing.
Yes.
Addressing that.
Yes, this one posed some future contemplational legal action on us, so we went ahead and moved this one forward. The other ones we've been working with, calling, talking to, no issues as we work through the documents. The goal is to bring all change orders to you by at least the beginning of January, and you'll see them all pretty quickly. Corillo Engineering is working with us to work through those change orders. They started the initial stuff. We didn't have to catch them up, so you're going to see all of this start coming really quickly to you. As city managers spoke, we do have, we're hoping that the, the funding works out where this is going to be a kind of a net with all of the prior charges that are still outside, out pending. Any questions?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, I understand that we're a governmental entity. Is there, is there a chance that a mechanic's lien can be.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Filled on, on us as a governmental entity?
Yes.
Absolutely.
And that's embarrassing.
It is very embarrassing, and the difficulty becomes that Black Fox did the work, and the staff has approved the work. Mr. Rosales helped with some of this discussion on how that outfall could be successfully completed, and that's how it was able to be moved forward. So now that staff has approved the work, there's no reason not to pay them.
Not to pay.
Some of the other subcontractors, KSA has still not approved the work, and even though the work has been completed, we're still going through the engineering, because remember, it's KSA and BAR on the hook.
Yeah, there's fifty or so, I think fifty-two cost proposals that we're working through. Those cost proposals will turn into change orders. Change orders will then get approved by you guys. We're working through those. This is just one of the change, one cost proposal that we put forward to get the contractor paid.
I appreciate the due diligence on that. Any other questions for staff?
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett.
Second.
Is the motion going to die for lack of a.
No, I had seconded.
I didn't hear you. Councilmember Fosler has seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
So this work is completed, and there's no additional work for this outfall replacement? Okay, thank you.
No further comments or questions indicated. Madam, City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to item twelve F, considering actual resolution of R dash two zero two four dash one seven seven, approving and authorizing the issuance of a request for proposal for banking services attached in Exhibit A, provided for repealing clause and establish an effective date. Ms. McElwain, welcome.
Hi, this is a resolution to issue an RFP to get a new contract for our banking and depository. The previous agreement will be, will extend on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the next item will be to extend that, so we have the ability to get these proposals back.
Ms. McElwain has laid this item out.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, who seconded. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland seconded. Any questions, comments?
Question.
Councilmember Lee.
So are, are these typically three years, four years?
This one was six. I'm not sure, I did not see any length. The one before that was two years, and they extended it two years, so I, the, the next one that we do, I had put in for five years, or the draft says five years.
Okay.
So, Mayor and counsel, typically you wouldn't see these RFP requests. You, you wouldn't see them. Staff has just been doing them. I've asked, and we've separated via purchasing, because I want you to see what's going to go out for bid. I want us to be better about posting online so we have local firms know what's available for city work, city services.
Thank you. No further comments or questions. We have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett, a second from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Madam, City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item twelve G, considering actual resolution of R dash two zero two four dash one seven eight, approving to extend the term of the current bank depository agreement, First National Bank of Bastrop, from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four until January thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. It's, as attached in Exhibit A, authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents provided for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. McElwain.
And this is just to extend our current agreement so that it gives us an opportunity to get our proposals back and award that bid, so.
Any questions for Ms. McElwain on this one month extension?
Move to approve.
I have a, I have a motion from Councilmember Fosler, a second from Councilmember Lee, seeing no further discussion indicated. Madam, City Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to thirteen items for individual consideration charter amendments. Thirteen A, considering act on the first reading of order number two zero two four dash four one to canvas returns and declare the results of the adoption, rejection, or proposed amendments to the existing Home Rule Charter of the special election held on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four, providing a severability clause providing an effective date. Ms. Parker.
Yes, Mayor and counsel, I have put, laid out all of the propositions for you, showing the number of four votes, against votes, and how many over votes and under votes on each of the cat, propositions that were voted on in November. In one proposition, J, there was a Scrivener's error, and it should have been on a different section than what it was listed at. It's not critical, so we'll just hold that for the next charter election. So this resolution will approve all of those propositions with the exception of the one that there was a Scrivener error on. Staff requests approval.
Counsel, City Secretary has laid this out. Do we have any comments or questions? Councilmember Lee.
Yes, can you tell us what J was?
That was the item that it said that the Charter Review Commission would meet every, we would call them to order every so many years, and the number that was used was incorrect. The number that was printed and that was provided as part of the charter amendments showed section three point oh nine, and section three point oh nine is under the city secretary, not under the charter. The charter was thirteen point oh nine.
Okay, thank you for saying that.
A question for a city attorney. Does the Scrivener's error preclude us from adopting this?
Mayor, counsel, I think you have a choice. Because it's non-substantive, I think we can codify it with the correct number, but if you would rather delay it, then I don't, I agree with the city secretary that this is not an important one to do at this time.
Okay. Counsel, any further questions for the city secretary? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. We do have a public comment here on thirteen A. Ms. Curtis. State your name and address. I apologize for skipping over that part.
Okay, I'm Linda Curtis, and I'm, I'm speaking for the League of Independent Voters. I live just outside the city on South Shore Road, and I'm going to leave it at that as to where I actually live.
This is a meaningful charter amendment to a lot of people. This is, this is about the Charter Revision Commission. And I really hope that you guys will, will just go with the first option, which is to just go with the fact that the voters passed this overwhelmingly. It's a Scrivener's error. It's one digit off, so please, let's do it as the voters had passed it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We've, the item's been laid out. We have a, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion has been indicated. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes four to one. The sentee involved from Councilmember Fosler. We'll move on to item thirteen B, considering an act on first reading of order number two zero two four dash five two, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter one, General Provisions, Article one point zero three, Mayor and City Council, Division two, Mayor, Section one point zero three dash zero three two, compensation in Section one point zero three point zero three three, expense account, Division three, City Council, Section one point zero three point zero six one, composition meetings, Section one point zero three point zero six two, compensation of council members to comply with the City of Bastrop Home Rule Charter, providing for findings of fact, adoption, enforcement, repealer and severability, establishes an effective date and ensures proper notice and meeting. Ms. Parker?
Yes. The Code of Ordinances has not been approved or changed, amended in any way, form or fashion in this section since nineteen ninety-five, when you changed from one codifier to another. The Code of Ordinances did not comply with what you had in your Home Rule Charter. They conflicted. There's a section in the meetings that also conflicted with your rules of procedure that you just, policy that you just adopted from the charter. So this is an attempt to get everything in on the same page. I would hope that in the future, when you adopt a policy, that you maybe consider codifying because you have a policy that says one thing and you have the Home Rule Charter and then you have an ordinance. So if you look at the first change that was made, it shows that the mayor receives a hundred dollars per month. Well, you haven't received a hundred dollars per month for a long time, so that needed to be fixed. And then also changed to reflect the adopted rules and procedures in that section. And then your, your charter says you'll meet once a month. You have to, a minimum. The Code of Ordinances says you're going to meet twice a month on the first Tuesday. So it's, and it gets people confused because we've had several people say, well, this says this and this says this and this clarifies it for everyone and so there's no confusion. So we're, we're trying to eliminate all that confusion that has occurred. And it showed the city council members getting thirty dollars a month and you haven't gotten thirty dollars in a long time as well. So they, also you didn't have anything in the code that said the council could get their expenses. You had it in the charter and you had it for the mayor in the code and the charter, but you didn't have it for the council members. So it's just trying to get everything to match so that, and it does say, please see the Home Rule Charter for future. If there's some other changes, then, then the hope, hope is that people will say, well, it's here in the charter. So we're, we're okay. Staff requests approval.
We have a couple of questions. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
So when I first got on council, I read through the ordinances comprehensively and those were on my list and I appreciated the way in which you fixed them. It was very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you find some others, please tell us because Sylvia's cracking the whip.
Thank you.
Council, the city secretary has laid this item out. There's no further questions. I'll, I have a motion. I have a motion from council, from Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. I didn't catch who seconded it. A second from Councilmember Lee. No further discussion. Madam City Secretary, if you'll call the row.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosler?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item thirteen C, considering actual resolution number R dash two zero two four dash one eight four, to ratify the mayor and city council salary increases as approved at the November five, twenty twenty-four special election with approval of Proposition I, authorizing and directing the city secretary and human resources director to execute all necessary documents for the salary of elected officials, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Parker?
Yes, sir, thank you. This was put together because of the charter election and wanted to be sure that we had a record that says who's going to do this and be sure who's going to get paid at what time. So all of you cannot get paid till the next election. So the, so this is what it does. It puts it in a document and it dictates that the city secretary, whomever that is, and the H R director take care of this during the onboarding. And we are getting a procedure together for onboarding as to what we're going to, what we're going to instruct the new council members on, if they're new ones, and the different things, cell phone, all the information that they would need. So that would be the opportune time to get this done and that's to inform them when their pay raise is and so staff requests approval.
Council, the city secretary has laid this out. Comments and questions? Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yeah, so one of the things that, so I went through a process to donate my council salary to the Good Neighbor Fund, which is that administered by the Food Pantry to pay electric bills. And I'd like to see something like that codified a little bit better. It was a, a very manual process that was just sort of like ideas that finally Tracy Waldron said, you know, rather than not taking a salary, take the salary and donate it.